All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Alameda City Council meeting. For a pleasant change, we are not just coming back from closed session. And I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask my colleague, Councilmember Desag, if he would please lead us in the pledge.
Please.
Oh.
Ready, begin. And. And one nation. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Desag. Madam Clerk Laura Weisenger, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Bowler.
Here.
Desag.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Mayor Ezzy Ashcraft.
Here.
Five present.
All right, so we begin the evening with proclamations. No, we don't, we go next to item two, jumping the gun. Agenda changes, Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda changes?
We just have one, that item five E was withdrawn and will not be heard tonight.
All right, thank you. So now we move on to proclamations, and we do have a proclamation this evening because April is Arab American Heritage Month. And coincidentally, I'm an Arab American, so it is my pleasure to read this proclamation. So California joins the nation in recognizing the month of April as Arab American Heritage Month. As California Governor Gavin Newsom wrote, "As home to more immigrants than any other state, California knows firsthand that diversity is our greatest asset. Our state is fortunate to have the largest Arab American population in the country, with thriving communities in Los Angeles, San Diego, the Bay Area, and other parts of the state that trace their heritage across the Middle East and North Africa. And Arab immigrants and their descendants have enriched our nation and our state with their traditions, values, and diverse perspectives for more than a century, positively impacting every aspect of American society, from medicine, law, and business to the arts, education, and public service, shaping the nation's identity through their creativity, innovation, and hard work. And whereas the San Francisco Bay Area has long been home to a vibrant Arab American community, whose members have contributed to the cultural, economic, and social life of the region, founding businesses, establishing cultural and religious organizations, and contributing to the fields of art, technology, law, medicine, education, and more. And Arab American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to not only celebrate the invaluable role of Arab Americans in the Bay Area and around the country, but also to stand united in the ongoing fight against hate and discrimination, and to promote a culture of inclusivity, understanding, and mutual respect among all communities. And by acknowledging and addressing anti-Arab discrimination, we can foster a more just and equitable society. And by recognizing the contributions of our Arab American neighbors, we honor the diversity and richness that we value in our island community. During Arab American Heritage Month, we honor the past, present, and future of this community in our California story, and rededicate ourselves to ensuring the safety and belonging of Arab Americans across our state. And Arab Americans join with all Americans in the shared pursuit of a free and diverse democratic society where every person is guaranteed equality and security. Now therefore, I, Marilyn Ezzy Ashcraft, Mayor of the City of Alameda, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Arab American Heritage Month in the City of Alameda, and encourage all residents to learn more about the rich culture and traditions of Arab Americans by participating in the following activities presented by the Alameda Free Library. Today going on is the Take and Make Arabic-Style Tile Kit activity at the West End Library Branch for kids ages eight and up. Kits are available while supplies last, so if you didn't get there today, try tomorrow. And then there is an Arab Architecture and Art Activity on Saturday, April 12th, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. at the Laydecker Event Center that's out by the Bay Farm Branch Island. And this is presented in partnership with the Museum of Children's Art and is for children ages five and up and their caregivers. And finally, on Tuesday, April 29th, in the Main Library at 5:30 p.m. is a multimedia presentation of archival materials from librarians with Palestine. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to read that. As I was declaring this month Arab American Heritage Month, I was thinking, when I was growing up, that just wouldn't have been a thing. I mean, people didn't talk about Arab Americans. If I said I was Arab American, people didn't know what that meant. So we've come a long way, we've got a ways to go, but we've come a long way, and it's a good thing. Thank you so much.
And we have one speaker.
And we have one speaker. All right, Madam Clerk, who's our speaker?
Jean Nader.
My fellow Arab American, welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can, hi.
My name is Jean Nader, and I am an Alameda resident. I'm a member of Alameda Friends and Family for Collective Liberation, and I am a proud Lebanese American. And I really appreciate this proclamation, especially in light of the testimony that you heard two weeks ago. Personally, I found the testimony opposing Wadi Fahkeen Sister City proposal very offensive, very racist, and dehumanizing to our Palestinian brothers and sisters. And especially in the last two weeks where the violence has totally escalated, you know, killing paramedics, children dying, it's just getting worse. It seems like this is the opportune time to build a Sister City relationship with Wadi Fahkeen and to choose humanity. And so I just urge you to support our Sister City proposal, and I look forward to hearing more about it in the future when you just consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment on this side? Okay, so then we move on to item number four. And this is oral communication, non-agenda items, where we take 15 minutes at the top of the agenda, and speakers can address the council in regard to any matter not on the agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. If, and these are in-person comments only, no remote speakers here. If we run out of time, go past the 15 minutes, it's okay, because we will take another oral communication at the end of the regular agenda, which isn't too long. But before we go into oral communications, I will just read our rules to live by, the ground rules for, and they're not bad for general life, but for council meetings. So I remind everybody, and you can probably join with me, but don't, that this is a business meeting, we're doing the business of the people of the City of Alameda. It is not a sporting event, it's not theater, we don't applaud, boo, cheer, jeer, do the wave. We just listen respectfully to our fellow speakers, and when it's our turn to speak, we get up and speak for the allotted number of minutes. And I say this for a number of reasons, and one of them is that public speaking can be the most stressful thing for a person to do. Some of us have background in the law, and we're used to getting up in front of people, but it's not easy, especially in the beginning. I never want someone to not get up and speak because they're afraid someone might boo or jeer or didn't like something they said. This is a safe space, this is the community's town hall, and you have a right to speak, you have your First Amendment right to speak. I always appreciate it when it's respectful and civil, but you have your right to speak for your allotted time. Bear in mind that sometimes we have young people in the audience, often we don't see our audience, they're watching remotely. We want to set a good civic example for them. And again, just to make this a safe space, a safe place to speak and to listen and to hear other points of view. So, and if you have signs, that's also your First Amendment right to hold a sign. Just, I ask you, if you're not sitting in that last row, don't hold it over your head where you would block someone else's view, because everybody wants to be able to see the speakers. Other than that, it's very simple, but I always add this language from the California Penal Code, Section 403, that states it is a criminal offense for any person to, without authority of law, willfully disturb or break up any assembly or meeting that is not unlawful in its character other than an assembly or meeting referred to in Penal Code, Section 302, or Elections Code 18340. First violations will receive a warning and continued violations will require additional action, which could include police intervention. And by saying that, it means it won't happen. So anyway, with all those admonitions in mind, Madam Clerk, do we have speakers under item four oral communications?
We do, and they will get two minutes each. The first one is William Morrison.
Welcome, Speaker Morrison.
Darn, I lost three minutes. So too many people are here again. All right, very quickly, counsel, I want to thank you very much, I would like to really congratulate you. My admiration goes out to you, I was at the meeting last time. Started at seven, I think y'all started at five. I left at 1:30, I don't think, I think y'all stayed a little bit longer. So that said, I'd like to really get down to item 7B again, in the fact, I'm not sure really what got decided. Now, that was last, that's last week's, so that's what we're talking about. I'm coming back to it because I think things still need to be looked at. One of the things I would like to point out, I think today you received an email from a group of people within the neighborhood that I am in. We represent 80 people who signed, there are more that are coming afterwards as well. And frankly, the basic point was staff seemed to represent things from the perspective of there was this overwhelming desire for changes to happen to Gibbons Drive. I would like to ask a real question, y'all were supposed to be talking about calming traffic on Fernside and bikes on Fernside. I don't hear Gibbons Drive in there at all. And frankly, I think the entire effort was out of scope and had no remit, it had no consequence, and should not have been discussed. I'm not saying that the Transportation Commission should not bring it before you, but they should do it separately. I think this is supposed to be funded by funds from, what is it, BB, as far as that goes? I see in the letter that came by the memo from the city manager, they're asking for $350,000 from the general fund. Did you agree to that last week? I hope not, because I think if you did, I think you got jobbed, you know? And so that's kind of where we are, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Gordon Williams.
Welcome, Speaker Williams.
Good evening, hi, I'm Gordon Williams, resident in the Fernside area. Thank you for everything that you guys have been doing. I'm here talking about the same thing as Mr. Morrison. The, we submitted this letter today, hopefully you all got it, and signed by 82 residents of the Fernside neighborhood. And I think that that level of support shows how deeply we care about this, it's a very important topic to us. What we're asking for is for the city to take a very comprehensive look at the traffic in that whole area, the whole area that's bracketed by High Street, Central, Broadway, Fernside. What we need is a thoughtful, transparent process that's grounded in data and guided by community involvement. The strong reaction that you're hearing from us, both at the last meeting, this letter today, our comments today, and you'll certainly hear more comments from us as time goes on, it comes, it kind of, I want you to understand it from our perspective. What we see is there is a small group of influential residents on the 3100 block of Gibbons that organized, they pushed for this, and it kind of got steamrolled through here where I looked at the dates of the agenda and all the letters, everything that was submitted for the last meeting. The agenda came out 12 days before, this amendment got put in four days before the meeting. The same day that that happened, there is every, every single, almost every positive letter for the project was organized and submitted that day. All the rest of us were catching up, so while you might have seen a 50/50 response last week, it's much lower percentage of pro versus on that project. Just backing up what he says, Gibbons is not Fernside. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker?
Joshua Altieri.
Welcome, Speaker Altieri.
Hello and good evening, my name is Josh Altieri, I'm the Community Relations Manager at the Housing Authority of the City of Alameda. I have two important announcements regarding two new affordable housing communities that are being built at the Housing Authority's property, North Housing. We are opening up a housing waitlist for Lynette Corner, which is situated 2000 Laker Circle. It sits between Alameda Landing and the Naval Base. It is a property for individuals 62 and older. The waitlist is going to open this Friday, April 4th, at 11:00 a.m. And will be open for two weeks and close on April 18th. The waitlist is for 23 studios. One studio will be at 30% area median income, and 22 studios will be at 40% area median income. And they're suitable for one to two, one to two-person households. And each studio apartment will feature a full kitchen and bathroom. Preference will be given to those that live or work in the City of Alameda. And movements are expected to begin in September of 2025. And we, for anyone that's interested, we encourage them to go visit lynnetecorner.com, that's L-I-N-N-E-T corner.com for more information. And the second building is Estuary 1, which is located at 501 Mosley Avenue. And it's the City of Alameda's first permanent supportive housing unit for individuals 18 and older. Very exciting, it's going to have 45 units, it's going to be one bedrooms and studios. It's expected to open July 2025. There's not a waitlist for this property, all the referrals will be coming from the Alameda County's coordinated entry system, so we invite anyone that's interested to call 211 or visit the website 211alamedacounty.org. And then lastly, I'd like to thank the city staff for their diligence and hard work in making these two projects get to this stage. That's from Planning and Building Departments, Housing Department, Library, Mastic Senior Center, the City Managers Office, Public Works, Alameda Municipal Power. And we will have a grand opening in the fall.
Thank you so much, good to see you. Our next speaker?
Brianna Wing.
Welcome, Speaker Wing.
Hello, my name is Brianna Wing. Police departments rarely get praised for their hard work. Much appreciation for APD and their continued service to our community. Moving forward, teaching kids how to treat one another with respect is a valuable life skillset that is translatable in the real world. That includes being kind and thoughtful towards others. I endured bullying by staff and students at Alameda High School. While I may have grown up, bullying still exists. You have the power to teach your children right from wrong, please be responsible. Shoplifting at CVS takes place every day by our local high school students. Please take the time to get off your phones and do the dolting that is necessary to reduce crimes in Alameda. Today, a friend needed to pick up her medications at CVS, but the parking lot was full, with at most five customers inside the store, and a student shoplifted a soda. I never thought that entitlement would be such an impactful issue in 2025, but it is. Please stop parking in the CVS parking lot for other purposes. The CVS parking lot is for CVS customers only. Teaching manners, etiquette, and kindness are important for the betterment of our community. Sadly, we live in a world where people are glued to their phones. I'm here to share my gratitude for APD, along with a wake-up call. Get off your screens and parent your children. Cops can't do all the work, please raise your children responsibly.
Thank you, our next speaker?
Rachel Campos de Avena.
Welcome, Speaker Campos de Avena.
Thank you, Rachel Campos de Avena from Radium Presents. And I'm here to share today that this is also the start of Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. I wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the great work that our city is doing to support just that. Radium, Weston Arts District, and Rhythmic Cultural Works are about to embark on the next phase of a year-long climate arts initiative called Rising Tides. Next up will be a three-week outdoor photography exhibit at Radium Runway called In Plain Sight. We will be transforming the area into an open-air gallery from May 9th until June 1st for all to enjoy. While on display, the display includes work from local and international photographers designed to inspire our community to reflect on the possibilities of a climate-positive future. The calendar is peppered with free community events from all three partner organizations. We have school field trips, dance performances, workshops, speaker talks, and even a vegan-centric food festival. So I wanted to invite each and every one of you to come enjoy, enjoy, and come and see the display. But most importantly, that this Herculean initiative would not have been possible without the leadership, especially from our mayor and the City of Alameda's support for the arts. And as our country continues to move through these deeply difficult times, I encourage you to continue support on a local level, as well as advocate for support on a regional, state, and national levels, so our artists can continue to bring cultural understanding, creativity, and most importantly, joy to our island community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Paula Rainey.
Welcome, Speaker Rainey.
Good evening, and thank you very much, I'm Paula Rainey. And I'm here tonight to represent the League of Women Voters of Alameda. I want to announce and also invite all of you to attend our upcoming speaker series. It's titled, "Is Free Speech a Core Value of Our Democracy?" And this series is being presented in partnership with the Alameda Free Library. And we even have some very appreciated funding from the Rotary Club. So the first program will be held on Tuesday next week, that's April 8th, at 6:00 p.m., the Main Library. And I'm really happy to announce that Zara Bilu, who is the Executive Director of CARE, otherwise known as, formerly known as the Council on American Islamic Relations, will be our first presenter. Now CARE is really in the trenches in terms of their work to represent people in our own community that have had their own free speech rights eroded in one way or another, maybe at work, maybe in campus, maybe in their neighborhood. And they're also, as was referenced tonight, they're working for many years in the area of hate speech that arises in our communities. So I think this could be a very excellent opportunity, everybody's welcome, it's a free program. And I know there will be thoughtful discussion, so thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Oh, okay, so with that, I will close oral communication. And we will move on to the consent calendar. And these are routine items that are approved by one motion unless council members remove an item for discussion, removed items will be heard at the end of our regular agenda. And council members may speak for up to three minutes on consent calendar items. So first of all, counsel, is there any consent calendar items anybody wants to pull? Going once, going twice, Councilmember Desag?
Well, if I'm going to pull, vote no on something, do I have to pull it?
No.
No.
And can I still comment on why I voted no? Okay.
All right, okay, okay, so no pulls. So then does counsel have any clarifying questions about any of the consent calendar items? Sorry, I'm supposed to call on our city clerk, Laura Weisenger, stick to the script. At this point, I would like to call on our city clerk Laura Weisenger to say a few words to the people.
Thank you so much. Before, there's a couple of consent calendar items that are addressing compensation increases, so I have something to just briefly read into the record. Before voting on compensation increases for certain executive staff, the Brown Act requires that the city publicly announce the recommended increases. In tonight's agenda, 5F, the City Attorney Contract Amendment, authorizes a one-time equity increase of 6% or $18,480 in the city attorney's annual salary retroactive to the first pay period in January 2025. 5H authorizes equity increases for three Alameda Municipal Power unrepresented employees as follows. Assistant General Manager Engineering and Operations salary is increasing by approximately 20%, resulting in salary range increase of $56,137 effective April 6, 2025. Assistant General Manager Customer and Energy Resources salary is increasing by approximately 13%, resulting in salary range increase of $29,191 effective April 6, 2025. Assistant General Manager Customer and Energy Resources salary is increasing by approximately 20%, resulting in a salary range increase of $44,910 effective April 6, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. So then I was starting to ask if counsel had any clarifying questions about any of our consent calendar items before we go to our public speakers. Vice Mayor Pryor?
I, so this is a question I had asked and I got an answer to, but I wanted to ask again because I don't think I'm going to be the only person that was wondering. So I had a question about the gap between industry standards and what I think there are three positions are currently being paid. And I got a really good explanation, but I.
And this is item?
I'm sorry, 5H.
H, okay.
And I can read what I was told, or I don't know if somebody wants to speak to that.
Well, maybe, so the question was the difference between?
Yeah, because I, when I saw, I said, why? Like, because there was a salary survey. And I think that's, sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, salary schedule, sorry, survey. And so it showed that the Assistant General Manager, I'm looking at the different titles, that there was, I just thought like, what?
We can have that answered.
Sorry.
So let me just ask who, I'm looking, the one who's not avoiding eye contact is our HR Director Jessica Romeo. Welcome, Ms. Romeo. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, counsel, thank you, Jessica Romeo, Human Resources Director. So I believe the.
And you might want to restate the question as you understand it.
So the question was, why is there such a large increase? And happy to read my response or just give you the response. But essentially, we do our salary surveys either when we're renewing contracts or when we have vacancies. I did go back and look when we blasted a salary survey for these positions, and it had been some time. It was prior to our last contract, so our last contract started three years ago. Our last salary survey that I was able to locate was from 2015, so a good 10 years. There may have been a survey in between, and I just was not able to find that. But in the last three years, there have been a lot of changes in the electric industry. And so just that market has changed significantly, and I believe that is really the result of, or what results in that large increase.
What kind of changes are you referring to?
So not only do we have competitors in the area, Santa Clara, Palo Alto, but there are these new wonderful things called community choice aggregators that are pulling executives from the same market, and so they are able to pay a lot more, which means we end up paying a lot more.
And the other communities you're referring to are other cities that also have a municipally-owned utility, and specifically a municipally-owned electric utility?
Correct, yes.
Right, okay, so that's helpful to know. And was that, did that answer your question?
It did. Yes, it did, yeah.
All right, thank you so much, Director Romeo. All right, any other clarifying questions, counsel? That was a good one. Okay, and Councilmember Desag, you'll wait until we vote. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers on the consent calendar?
We do, a remote speaker, Jay Garfinkel.
Welcome, Speaker Garfinkel.
Good evening. Would like to pull item 5D or comment on it. You know, 5D sets up a contract for construction and management of of a project that has not yet been set by ordinance. I refer to the EV charging stations. This has been put forward by the Public Works, not by the council or any other element of our government. Public Works describes this as a pilot project, but they don't say how the effectiveness or the satisfactory conclusion of the pilot will be determined. It claims categorical exemption from SEQA, but the SEQA regulations that they reference address only things like that, they're digging some holes at the side of the street and a few other very insignificant aspects. It does not address the negative environment, the negative impact that it will have on the entire environment of the city. Putting a few charging stations, digging a few holes is not very significant. Putting a few charging stations, digging a few holes is not very significant, but the effect that it will have on neighborhoods and the community in general is very important. This element of CEQA should be examined. The validity of their claim of exemption should be validated by the city attorney. I note that in general, planning staff and other staff claim categorical exemption very frequently, but when the exemptions are looked at, they're not valid at all, and the city attorney remains silent. I think that if the city is going to rely on these claims related to the protection of our environment, the city attorney should be addressing each and every claim of exemption. This contract will allow the vendor to buy electricity and then sell it to the charging vehicles owners for whatever they can get. And I think that that is not appropriate and should be addressed in the, in the contract. The city plans to fine $45 for each violation of the ordinance that's eventually created, but that fine can increase every year at the will of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our only speaker.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment on the consent calendar, and we will go to council comments. Councilmember Desoc, shall I start with you?
Yes, thank you. I will be voting no on item 5H regarding the pay increases of 13%, 20%, and 25%. Let me preface this by saying, you know, I think the work of our Human Resources Director is stellar, so this is not questioning their analysis of the situation. You know, I just feel that the amount that we're talking about is just, is just too much at 13%, 20% or 25%. You know, if other cities are competitive cities like Lodi, or Palo Alto, or Roseville and Santa Clara in particular, you know, if they want to jack up the rates at the way, the pay and the way that they do, you know, you know, more power to them. But I think, you know, this is just a bidding war that we ought not to engage. Now, granted, I say that with eyes wide open. Will we simply be a training ground for people who come to Alameda and then, and then go on to other cities? Maybe. But at the end of the day, you know, if we don't have the workers who love Alameda at the decent pay that we're paying them, then, you know, then let's look, let's look for the right woman or the right man to fill the position. And I, you know, for that reason, I think that the pay as it is is high, it's just, the question is, it's not as high as other cities. And I think for us to get into a bidding war so that we're on even keel with them, I just don't think that it's, I just don't think it sends a right message of having pay increases of 13%, 20% or 25%. So for that reason, I will be voting no. Now, to reemphasize, this is not a second guessing of our staff's analysis of the situation. We're in a bidding war, and I just, I choose not to engage in that.
Thank you, Councilmember Desoc. Any other comments from the council? Seeing, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor. All those, and we're all in person today, so we can just do voice votes. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye. And with the note that Councilmember Desoc is voting no on item 5H, right?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. That is the consent calendar, and then we move on to item. We don't have an item six because we finished everything, so, oh, it's my State of the City. Thank you. So then, I think the city clerk could use a little help turning the podium, maybe?
I could do it myself, it's on wheels.
Oh, it's on wheels?
Yeah. I do it all the time, my little dance with it. I think it's a little off.
So, all right. I'll be right there. I wasn't expecting it to come up quite so soon. All right. Let's see. Hello, everyone. It's just easier for me to stand here and speak, it's a little bit longer than my usual, than my usual remarks and proclamations, not as long as Senator Booker's remarks today, but I think I fully endorse them. But anyway, I am going to, whoops, sorry. Okay, that's the right one. Okay, so hello, everyone, and this is my 2025 State of the City address, and as is required by our Sunshine Ordinance, I need to first tell you about complaints, Sunshine Ordinance complaints that were filed in 2024. So there was one Sunshine Ordinance complaint that was withdrawn by the complainant, and there was a second one that was not heard because the complainant failed to attend the hearing. And then I can move on to my State of the City address, and my theme this year is creating a resilient city. The New Oxford American Dictionary defines resilient as the ability to withstand or recover quickly from difficult conditions. This word reminds me, now bear in mind that I first gave this address last month before the city, the Chamber of Commerce, that was in March, but five years ago last month, Alameda and cities around the world learned of a virus named COVID-19 and collectively embarked on a journey that tested our resilience. But over time, with the help of science, healthcare professionals, government policies, the cooperation of our residents, and resilience, we prevailed. And I just have to give a little anecdote from Monday, I can never do these without going off script a little, but Monday was just yesterday. I started my day the best way possible at a schoolyard. I was invited to speak to the elementary students at Otis Elementary. Yay, Otis Owls, they were awesome. And so I did my 40 jumping jacks on the blacktop with everyone, so glad I wore flat shoes. And then a group of the fifth graders from the leadership class took me on a tour of the school, and I visited a first grade, a third grade, a fifth grade classroom, the steam lab, but we were upstairs and looking out over the kindergarten play yard, and I noticed the kindergarten, it's probably at all the schools, they have their own enclosed play yard, and it was adorable, and the worldly fifth graders were telling me it's good that they have their own play yard. And I said, can you guys remember being kindergarteners? And they said, well, yeah, because we started out there, but then we went to Zoom screens. This was, these were the kindergarteners when COVID struck, and it just hit me, oh my goodness. But I said, you're all amazing, so you'd, but I mean, just imagine that, that that's it, and that was kindergarten, then first grade was all on a Zoom screen, and then second grade for them was hybrid and sunback, and the parents in the room are nodding, they know, they lived through that. My twins are now 33, I did not live through that. Anyway, but what are the elements of a, but talk about resilience, and our children are resilient, and what are the elements of a resilient city? I spent a recent weekend in Yosemite at an environmental policy conference for elected officials and utility board members from across the state. As you can imagine, there were considerable discussion of how to make our communities more resilient, safe from devastating fires, floods, sea level rise, drought, and more. So safety is certainly one attribute of a resilient city. Other elements include community safety, a healthy community, housing security and affordability, financial stability, dedicated leadership and partnerships. So let's look at how Alameda is creating a resilient city now and in the future, starting with safety. There are many kinds of safety, and the city of Alameda is focused on community safety, including safety from natural disasters. Alameda Fire Chief Nick Looby, who was here earlier, would tell you that fire season is now year-round as a result of climate change and other factors, such as the wildland urban interface, where homes and other structures are built adjacent to wildlife vegetation. This fact is demonstrated by the number of times the Alameda Fire Department, in conjunction with the California Office of Emergency Services and FEMA Urban Search and Rescue, assisted with fires around the state, in the Angeles National Forest, in Butte, Ventura, Shasta, Tahemis, Siskiyou, Kern, Plumas, and Tulare Counties, as far away as Oregon and as close to home as near Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory and the Keller Wildland Fire in the Oakland Hills. And I did say wildland, and Oakland in the same phrase. In 2024, the Alameda Fire Department added four new recruits to its ranks, but sometimes in a disaster, emergency services are stretched so thin that we need community members who are trained to assist in an emergency. That's why community emergency response team or CERT members are so important, because that's what they do. In 2024, 30 Alameda residents completed the training to become CERT members, and I was one of them. And I strongly urge you to complete this training too, seriously, every single one of you, if you're an Alameda resident, please complete the training. If you're not an Alameda resident, complete the training in whatever city you're in. We did the training in conjunction with the Oakland Fire Department and Oakland residents, and some of the Oakland residents have lived through the Oakland Hills Fire in, I want to say, 1991, and they, they really take this seriously, and their communities really coalesce around that, realizing how much better prepared they needed to be. So visit alameda.ca.gov for more information and to sign up for the next training session so you can help keep your family, your colleagues, and your community safe in a disaster. The safety of our neighborhoods and commercial districts is a top concern of residents and businesses, and the Alameda Police Department, under the direction of Police Chief Nishant Joshi, is responding to these concerns by recruiting and retaining a highly skilled, diverse police department. In 2024, new officers were hired and long-serving officers were promoted, filling all 88 positions in the patrol unit and fully staffing the dispatch unit. That is not to say that the Alameda Police Department is fully staffed, it is not. We're doing better than many communities. I was just on a webinar from New York this morning, and it's, you know, a lot of cities are having challenges hiring people. I think we're a little ahead of the curve, but we're still working, and then people retire, and it's just, you're constantly working at that. However, the most frequently reported crime in 2024 and 2025 continues to be theft, including auto theft. However, numbers are trending down. APD reported a nearly 13% reduction in all crime for 2024 as compared to 2023, both as a result of increased hiring and Chief Joshi's use of technology and data to strategically deploy officers. A particular interest to local businesses is APD's new liaison with our business districts, Lieutenant Jeff Park. Lieutenant Park, who is the son of immigrants who were small business owners, meets regularly with Alameda's business owners to hear and address their concerns, including by recently initiating a bicycle detail to help patrol our downtown districts. And, excuse me, public safety in Alameda is also enhanced by the Prosecution and Public Rights Unit, a division of the City Attorney's Office led by City Attorney Eben Shen. In 2024, the PPRU reviewed over 800 cases and filed charges with the Alameda County District Attorney's Office in approximately 500 of these cases. These cases ranged from domestic violence, which includes elder abuse, child abuse, and animal abuse, sexual assault and guns charges, to petty theft and driving under the influence. The unit resolved over 350 of these cases with convictions and where appropriate diversion programs. And this is something that just contributes to our quality of life in Alameda because the Alameda County District Attorney's Office is a very busy office. There's a representative right here in the dais, and they can't take all of these lower level crimes from all the 14 cities and unincorporated area of the county. So we're really fortunate that within the City Attorney's Office, our City Attorney Eben Shen started this unit, I mean, it was approved by the voters. Anyway, Alameda residents and businesses also want safe streets, streets that are safe for all users, especially the most vulnerable, which are children and seniors, pedestrians and bicyclists. To that end, the city council recently approved the installation of cameras at two busy intersections, Park Street and Otis Drive, and Webster Street and Atlantic Avenue, to capture red light violators who, after a month-long education campaign, will receive a notice of violation in the mail, likely involving a significant fine to deter this dangerous practice. And last year, the Public Works Department, under the direction of Public Works Director Aaron Smith, who's joining us this evening, and assisted by City Engineer Scott McStrom, who's also here, completed significant bicyclist and pedestrian improvements with the extension of the Cross Alameda Trail along Clement Avenue, yay, from Willow Street to Broadway. And these improvements included railroad track removal, high-visibility crosswalks, and daylighted intersections. And I say this all the time, if we want to get people out of their cars, we have to provide safe, user-friendly alternatives like the Cross Alameda Trail. And, you know, just in the last couple of days, I was in an event last night, and there were some council members from the city of San Leandro, and the one council member's son goes to high school, goes to St. Joseph's High School in Alameda, and he was saying, "Mayor, I love what your city's doing with traffic calming with the infrastructure for bicyclists." And I thought, you know, sometimes it helps to have somebody from coming out of, from outside the city to come and see what we're doing. A friend of mine, we grew up here, we went all through public school together, and she lives in Oakland now, but they were here the other day, and she texted me, "As," that was my nickname, "As, it's amazing how the streets or the crosswalks, you're doing such a great job." It's not me, it's, it's our great department, so, so thank you for that. But, so we have to provide these users, safe, user-friendly alternatives like the Cross Alameda Trail, where as a bicyclist, you are physically protected from, from the automobiles. And I'm an experienced bicyclist, but I just love riding, riding there, it makes it a pleasure. Public Works has also begun construction of the Central Avenue Safety Improvement Project from Sherman Street to Main Street to enhance safety for all users. And when complete, the stretch of roadway will reduce four motor vehicle traffic lanes to, in each direction, to one lane in each direction, and add a two-way left-turn center lane and bikeways. The project also includes roundabouts on Central Avenue in the West End near Enstanel High School to help control traffic. In 2024, Public Works also completed construction of new backbone infrastructure at Alameda Point, in Alameda Point's adaptive reuse area, including four blocks of new complete streets designed for bike and pedestrian safety as well as automobile travel. And safety for Alameda residents also includes planning for sea level rise, the 2025 Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, or CARP, update, and the 2024 Annual Report, prepared by Sustainability and Resilience Manager Danielle Mueller, also in the, in the audience today, addresses this important topic. The updated CARP includes community engagement to create a more sustainable, resilient community together. One example is the new Alameda Youth Climate Ambassadors Program, which helps student climate club representatives learn how to get involved in city climate action work and activate the broader student community. And, you know, when you think of it, this is so appropriate because we're doing this not just for the present, but all... because we're doing this not just for the present, but also for the future, for our children, for the next generation, and the generation after that. And these young people, they care, they're committed, they get it. And so, it's lovely to just bring them in at the school level. Safety also means creating a safe space for LGBTQ+ teens to be themselves and find support with each other and with adult role models. And recently, in collaboration with Alameda Collaborative for Children, Youth, and Families, and Alameda Pride, the first Center for Alameda LGBTQ+ Teens opened. It is called QTAC, which stands for Queer Teen Alameda Center. A name the teens chose for themselves. And now, more than ever, our community needs this critical resource for LGBTQ+ teens to ensure that everyone feels safe and supported here. Because in Alameda, we believe that everyone belongs here is more than a slogan, it is an affirmation. A resilient community is also a healthy community where basic needs are met. Basic needs like food and shelter, but also clean air and a healthy environment. Recently, the Alameda Food Bank, which was featured, oh, in a very nice video presentation that you're not going to see tonight, sorry. It'll be on the website, right, Sarah? Began construction of its new forever home at Alameda Point, where with the help of its many dedicated volunteers, it will continue to assure that no one in our city goes hungry. We are also working to reduce greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to global warming and sea level rise. And I am proud to announce that, to date, Alameda has reduced greenhouse gas emissions by twenty-nine percent from two thousand and five levels, keeping the city on track to meet its goal of a fifty percent reduction by 2030. And this is even more impressive when you stop to think that between 2022, and I think these numbers were measured in two thousand and five and two thousand and twenty-two, we added more residents, we added more jobs, and we still reduced our number of greenhouse gas emissions by twenty-nine percent. This project is driven by Alameda Municipal Power, or AMP, transitioned to one hundred percent clean energy in 2020. And General Manager of AMP, Tim Haines, is here in the front row. And also, a twenty-five percent decrease in transportation emissions due to cleaner vehicles, lower vehicle miles traveled, and more efficient off-road equipment. In the next five years, the CARP calls for expanding public electric vehicle charging and improving the energy performance of our buildings and also expanding the tree canopy. I think there was a tree planting on the weekend to help add to the tree canopy. And AMP General Manager, Tim Haines, reports that AMP offers customer education programs about electrification and use of solar and batteries to supply customers' electric needs. AMP also plans to implement an outage management system to restore power more quickly and provide customers with more timely outage notifications. More information is available at AMP's website, alamedamp.com. The new water shuttle, little yellow Woodstock, I hope maybe you've ridden Woodstock. It provides an alternative to car travel from the West End of Alameda, carrying passengers back and forth across the estuary from the Hall Circle Immigrant Park at Alameda Landing to Oakland's Jacklinden Square on a limited schedule. It's a pilot program, but we hope to expand it. We also hope to replace adorable little Woodstock with an equally adorable electric shuttle. But it's a great addition, and people enjoy taking it from Oakland. All see families with their kids on the weekend and their, you know, park toys and tricycles and bicycles coming to the park and just going back and forth. It's great. And parks, open space, and libraries also support physical and mental health, and Alameda is fortunate to offer all of these. The Alameda Recreation and Parks Department, headed by Director Justin Long, is proud of its extensive park system that continues to expand. Currently, on the West End of Alameda, Phase Two of estuary park construction is underway. When completed, hopefully by mid-2026, it will include an accessible playground, full basketball court, large picnic area with restrooms, two dog parks, and, wait for it, four pickleball courts. There are never enough pickleball courts, I'm told. I haven't learned to play yet, but that's what I hear. An aquatic center is also planned for Gene Sweeney Park because swimming is an activity that can be enjoyed at any age. And AMP is an enthusiastic partner on the aquatic center and the city's shared goal for an energy-efficient, electric-powered aquatic center, which will include EV charging stations in the parking lot. The project is maybe six to eight weeks off schedule. We've run into a couple bumps in the road, but the design and development phase and sequel requirements are currently being completed. A resilient city assures accessibility for all users of its public spaces. Recently, Alameda assessed its programs and services, buildings and parks, sidewalks, and signalized crossings for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, or the ADA, and adopted an ADA Evaluation and Transition Plan. The city also hired an ADA Coordinator, Lillian Jewell, who will oversee implementation of the plan and conduct public engagement to raise overall awareness about the city's accessibility programs and policies. One of these programs is the city's Sidewalk Pilot Program, which promotes sidewalk damage repairs by property owners to keep our sidewalks safe for walking. And it's something you can learn more about on the city's website. And there's a way that you can get the work done, and the city will help you choose a contractor. There's a way to pay for it, so we definitely want to keep those sidewalks safe for everyone. The Alameda Free Library is a beloved institution that supports community well-being. In fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, there were one hundred eighty-six thousand visits to the main library. And bear in mind, we're a city of about seventy-nine thousand. Or to one of our two branch libraries. And the biggest driver of these visits was programs for children and their caregivers, including Storytimes in multiple languages and the ever-popular Mother Goose on the Loose, activity sessions that regularly draw between eighty to one hundred and fifteen participants and help children develop pre-literacy skills. And I told the story at the State of the City when I did it before the chamber that I went over, this is a while last year, when we had our new library director, Michael Eitner, had come, and we wanted to meet, and I said, "I'll come to your office." And so, I walked across the street, and he was waiting for me in the lobby. His office is upstairs. But as we were walking to the stairs, I looked over in the children's section, and I said, "I have never seen this many strollers in one place, except maybe outside a ride at Disneyland. What is going on, Michael?" And he said, "Oh, you want to see?" And he took me over, and it was Mother Goose on the Loose, and it was adorable. I know they had to expand to a bigger area, but this is, I'm a little biased because I co-chaired the campaign to build the new main library way back in twenty, the year two thousand, actually. But the library is just, it's the great leveler of the playing field, that all children should be able to develop those pre-literacy skills that then help them, and they can go to TK now before kindergarten, and that's what we just need to do more and more. Anyway, more than half of all items checked out from the library are materials for kids and teens. And everyday library director Mike Eitner and the library staff provide a welcoming space for the community to gather and learn. A resilient city also addresses mental health issues. In December twenty-twenty-one, the Alameda Care Team responded to its first call for service as an alternative to the previous model of dispatching police to public safety calls involving mental health crises, substance abuse disorders, homelessness, or a combination of these factors. The new model, using specially-trained firefighter, emergency medical technicians, or AMTs, to respond to these calls, assisted by mental health clinicians from Alameda Family Services, has been very successful. In fact, in 2024, Alameda's Care Team was named Program of the Year by the Alameda County Emergency Medical Services Agency for its outstanding service, which included, and again, in the year twenty-twenty-four, eight hundred and eighty client engagements, ranging from referrals for physical and mental health care, housing assistance, and family reconciliation. Last year, the Care Team also received one million dollars in congressional community project funding that will be used to offset program costs such as salaries, benefits, and our contract with the Alameda Family Services Agency. Housing security and affordability and addressing homelessness are also elements of a resilient city. Alameda Housing and Human Services Department is led by Assistant City Manager Amy Waldridge and Program Manager Simone Falls. And it oversees supportive transitional housing, including Dignity Village, Village of Love, and the adjacent Safe Parking Area, and former military housing at Alameda Point. In 2024, HHS, with assistance from Alameda Police Department and Public Works, worked to compassionately provide services to people who are unhoused, particularly along the Main Street encampment, and find more suitable locations for these individuals while addressing the safety and sanitation issues that arise with encampments. Equally as important as addressing homelessness compassionately and effectively is preventing people from becoming homeless in the first place through practices known as the three Ps, which are protection, preservation, and protection. And I'll start with protection. In 2024, the City of Alameda Rent Program, a division of the City Attorney's Office led by Rent Program Director Bill Chapin, provided information to tenants about their rights and helped landlords understand local regulations and rent program registration requirements by hosting thirty-five workshops and clinics and responding to almost nine thousand direct inquiries from the public. Rent program staff also helped eighty tenants receive refunds totaling more than one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars after identifying rent increases that violated local law. They also oversaw disbursement of twenty-four thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars from the Temporary Relocation Tenant Assistance Fund to seven tenant households that were displaced from their homes through no fault of their own due to unsafe conditions. The rent program is now seeking reimbursement for these temporary relocation funds from the responsible landlords. That's how the fund works. It keeps getting replenished. And the Prosecution and Public Rights Unit of the City Attorney's Office has a mediation program that also conducted nineteen voluntary mediations between local landlords and tenants, resulting in over fifty thousand dollars being returned to tenants. And I cannot overemphasize the importance of capturing every refunded deposit or what have you that a tenant is owed because in today's very high cost-of-living environment, people are living paycheck to paycheck on the edge where a medical emergency, a car repair, just something unexpected, a job loss, could throw them into housing insecurity, having to couch surf with a friend or relative, sleep in their car, maybe the bushes. We want to avoid this, so we make sure that we're protecting our tenants. And another, oh, and then the Public Prosecution Unit, in partnership with the Alameda County District Attorney's Office, took enforcement action against the owner of Barn Hill Marina, a community of houseboats and floating homes, where many residents are seniors on fixed incomes. And residents own their homes, but they rent their berths from the marina. This is kind of the model of a mobile home park. The city's complaint alleged unlawful rent hikes and tenant harassment, and the city prevailed, resulting in a favorable judgment requiring the marina owners to pay more than three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in penalties and overdue rent program fees and preventing them, prohibiting them from harassing tenants or interfering with their home sales. Again, protecting residents and tenants. Another important practice is preservation. And in Alameda, preservation of the city's aging housing stock is supported by our code enforcement officers and the rent program who respond to reports of unsafe housing conditions and work with owners to address these conditions. Alameda is also working diligently to address the third protection, the third P, which is housing protection. In 2024, two hundred forty-three building permits for new housing units were issued, and these included fifty-eight accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, and that was seven more ADU permits than in 2023. And our efforts were recognized last year when the state of California designated Alameda as a pro-housing city. Criteria included a completed and certified housing element, land zoned for higher-density housing, and a streamlined permitting process. Huge thanks go to the Planning, Building, and Transportation Department, led by Director Alan Tai and his staff for this impressive accomplishment. And beyond bragging rights, and mayors do brag, this designation provides the city with priority access to highly competitive state funding. For example, Alameda is now eligible for Pro-Housing Incentive Program Trust Funds, which the city's Base Reuse and Economic Development Department, led by Director Abby Thorne-Lyman, is leveraging to assist with the Cattellus Brookfield ReShape Project at Alameda Point, which has begun site preparation and will provide new housing for formerly homeless individuals and families, veterans, and domestic violence survivors. A resilient city also needs a financial stability. Local businesses are a crucial economic driver and Brad, again, Base Reuse and Economic Development, we call it Brad, led by Director Thorne-Lyman, supports businesses of all sizes across a wide variety of sectors, including life sciences, clean tech, green tech, and high tech, blue tech, and maritime, retail, tourism, and hospitality, artists, and small manufacturers. And Brad also works to attract new businesses to Alameda. The city's Economic Development Staff and Code Enforcement Team are working together to develop enhanced enforcement tools to help revitalize our downtown districts. For example, the Planning Department is updating the master fee schedule to include a vacant building monitoring fee. And the building official is planning to request adoption of a property maintenance code that will establish clear citywide maintenance standards. These efforts will support enforcement efforts and ensure regular upkeep of vacant property. We are also closely monitoring the Oakland-Alameda Access Project, an important construction project that will unfortunately require one-lane closures in the Webster and Posey Tubes and some overnight closures for extended periods of time, starting later this year. When completed, the Oakland-Alameda Access Project will make it faster and easier to access the eight-eighty freeway from the Posey Tube. But more importantly, it will improve the air quality and reduce the health impacts of idling cars on the residents of West Oakland, including Oakland-Chinatown. Because if you can picture yourself coming from Alameda to Oakland through the tube now, you go through the tube, you turn right, right, and right again to get on the freeway, and then you go over the area that you just came out of the tube. You've done kind of a cloverleaf. This will avoid that. But more significantly, the idling cars, and they were often idling, were just spewing emissions into the air, leading to a higher childhood asthma rate in West Oakland and Oakland-Chinatown, higher incidence of heart disease and lung disease. And so, I ask people to, we're doing everything we can to make it as smooth as possible. But bear in mind, there's a very important reason behind this, but we'll do our best to make it smooth. During construction, the city is anticipating major impacts for businesses affected by traffic delays and is working with the Alameda County Transportation Commission and Caltrans to provide support and enhance communication before and during construction. Staff is also creating a webpage to showcase business resources available during construction and provide links to other parties involved in the work. Another challenge Alameda faces is projected deficits in its annual general fund operating budget over the next two years due to a downturn in the real estate market and its impact on annual tax revenues, property tax revenues. And also, the addition of new community programs focused on mental health, homelessness, and crime reduction, as well as increased insurance and pension costs that have contributed to the proposed deficit. And we now face the potential of losing some of our federal funding for important transportation and public safety projects, programs, and improvements. And we are working hard to see how we're going to backfill the possible loss and also applying for other funding sources. Nonetheless, the city is overall well-prepared to navigate the fiscal challenges and economic uncertainties that lie ahead because of our stable and steady property tax base, as well as strong reserves above and beyond the twenty-five percent of yearly expenditures the City Council requires be placed in our emergency rainy day fund. Additionally, city staff are proactively developing and implementing measures to reduce costs and increase revenues, as well as plan for the long-term fiscal resiliency of the city. And finally, a resilient city needs dedicated leadership to plan and execute vital policies. In Alameda, we are so fortunate to have a hard-working, talented, and creative staff, starting with City Manager and creative staff, starting with City Manager Jen Ott, who's off on spring vacation with her family this week, and all of our department heads, I've mentioned some of them who are here today. And I also have the pleasure of serving with a dedicated group of public servants, the Alameda City Council, which includes Vice Mayor Michelle Pryor and council members Greg Bowler, Tony Desog, and Tracy Jensen. Thank you to all of you. Partnerships are essential for a resilient city because collaboration between government, businesses, and community organizations is essential for advancing safety and sustainability efforts. And Alameda has amazing partners, which I'll list quickly in alphabetical order: the Alameda Chamber and Economic Alliance, AC Transit, Alameda Food Bank, Alameda Meals on Wheels, Alameda Unified School District, East Bay Regional Parks District, Friends of the Alameda Animal Shelter, Friends of the Alameda Library, Mastic Senior Center, the Port of Oakland, WETA, our federal, state, and county government representatives, and our faith-based community. And I call the last necessary element of a resilient city the power of you because a city is not just city government and elected resident, elected officials. It is the residents, and all of you have a role to play. Help create a sense of community by getting to know your neighbors and looking out for each other. I just, another quick segue, I was just talking to a friend today whose sister lost her home in the Altadena fire in Southern California. But she was telling me incredible stories of neighbors looking out for each other. There was a reason the death toll was really very low in those devastating fires that raged in Pacific Palisades and Altadena. But people, residents, neighbors, were looking out for each other. And we need to do that, too, and I think we do a lot of that in Alameda. Become a cert member, volunteer at your children's school for Meals on Wheels, the Alameda Animal Shelter, and more. Apply to serve on a city board and commission, and we're about to swear in some new board and commission members. Run for public office. See me, I'll tell you how easy it is. Be engaged. No, it really is a pleasure. Be engaged. And so in this, my seventh year as mayor of this wonderful city, I believe that Alameda is making great strides to be a resilient city, one where everyone can thrive and be a great place to live, work, and play. So thank you, everyone, for your attention. All right, back to regular programming. Madam Clerk, do you want me to help you turn this around? All right. Right, so then, when the clerk gets back, I, we will move on to item seven B. Madam Clerk, could you introduce that item, please?
Yes, adoption of resolutions appointing John Lipp as a member of the Commission on Persons with Disabilities, and Lily Boris and Hamil Saran as members of the Golf Commission. And they're all three here in person.
All three here. So counsel, what I am looking for is a oh, the frozen iPad. We have resolutions, and we can do it in one vote, can't we, Madam Clerk? So we need to adopt a resolution appointing the members that the city clerk just read to these positions. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Desog, seconded by was that you, Councilmember Jensen? All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. That passes unanimously. And yeah, you, you all come up and come up to the podium, and the city clerk will swear you in.
If you'll all raise your right hand. You solemnly sort of hold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that you'll well and faithfully discharge the duties of which you're about to enter.
And I am about to bring you your certificates. I'd just like to say it's so nice to, well, I know John Lipp, but it's lovely to meet my other two appointees in person because we do the interviews on a screen. The ink is still wet. Great. And yeah, and I think we get to hear a little bit from each of our new commissioners. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Ashcraft, City Council, and staff. My name is John Lipp. For those of you who don't know, I think I know everybody here. I'm deeply honored to be asked to serve as a member of the Commission on Persons with Disabilities. I have been a resident of Alameda since 2007, and I've served as the director and the CEO of Friends of the Alameda Animal Shelter since 2017. In 2015, at the age of forty-nine, I was diagnosed with young onset Parkinson's Disease. And like all disability illnesses, it is incredibly complex with both motor and non-motor symptoms that can greatly impact one's quality of life. One day, I have a hard time walking, and the next day, I'm running the five K July Fourth run for the city, so go figure, right? My diagnosis has also brought to me an awareness of other people's challenges, the damage that could be done when we make assumptions, and how life-changing it can be when we lead with compassion and with kindness. April is also Parkinson's Awareness Month, and I can't think of a better month for this appointment. And again, I'm really honored to ask to be served this new role for my community. And I want to thank you all for creating such a vibrant city for us to work in and play in and to thrive in. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. All right, and who's next? Don't be shy. And I just want to say that this gentleman was possibly the most novel interview I've had. I was on Zoom, he was too, on his phone because he was at the golf course. And I did ask if he was going to demonstrate his swing, but he'd already put his clubs away, but he's got a pretty impressive handicap. Well,
It's gone up recently.
And you can explain why. So welcome.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Hamil Saran. My wife and I recently moved to California from New York. I was born and raised a New Yorker in Westchester County, just north of the city, lived in New York for about, in Manhattan, for about eleven years working in finance. My wife is from Monterey County, went to Berkeley. So we've moved back here to be closer to family. As an avid golfer and somebody who wanted to kind of engage with the community, I thought it was a great way to, you know, just meet people. You know, I spend a lot of time there already, and so it was, it seemed like the natural way to just kind of get familiar with the place. That was the first way I found out about Alameda, right, was through the golf course. And, you know, we currently live in Oakland. We've are moving to Pacific and Eighth Street, where we are about to submit permits for renovation on the home that we bought from somebody who lived here for eighty years and spoke extremely highly of the town of Alameda. And we've actually went and visited her with our newborn, six-month-old son. So the energy we got when we moved to Alameda was something that was really unique around the Bay Area and was really what we were looking for to start our family. And so that's kind of, you know, how I ended up here in this seat. So thank you for, you know, the nomination and appointing me to this commission, and I'm excited to learn more about the community and engage with everyone here.
Thank you. Excited to have you. And our next, our next appointee.
My apologies for having my back to everyone. I'm not used to that.
Oh, yeah. And it's actually Dr. Boris, but go ahead and bring the microphone to you. Yeah, I know.
Thank you. Yeah, I haven't, I've never been used to having my back to people when I speak, but I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Ashcraft, and as well as the City Council members, as well as the wonderful interview I had with Mr. Long as well, and my Alameda community residents, and of course, everyone that's here tonight. Thanks for selecting me for the Golf Commission. The interview process was wonderful. And as a resident of this great city, I'm proud to also be a female golfer in our city. And I look forward to working with all of you on promoting golf, especially for women and the children of our city. And you already mentioned, as my background is advocacy, as well as I'm a physician. And a little something about me is that I love data. So I would actually love to work with de-identified data from the golf course and use that to promote golf in our community and look at geomapping and hot spotting and all of those things that we can use de-identified data for to identify places and people who may not be familiar with golf or promote other programs at our golf courses. So it's great appreciation that I'm here tonight, and thank you again.
Be sure to share that with Director Long, because he does staff the Golf Commission. Great, thank you. Anyway, I hope everyone can see how excited I am about our new appointees. And it is a very competitive process. We get so many amazing qualified people. It's just a pleasure to get to meet them when I interview, and I always interview with whoever staffs a particular board or commission. So anyway, that's just a plus-plus. All right, so I guess we have to conduct some business tonight, don't we? So Madam Clerk, would you, would you please introduce item seven C?
Adoption of resolution adopting the 2025 Climate Action and Resiliency Plan Mid-Cycle Update and Accept the 2024 Annual Report. This project is categorically exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Government Code of California Environmental Quality Act Guideline Section 15380, Actions by Regulatory Agencies for Protection of the Environment.
And this is, I know we bumped you from the last meeting, probably kept you out too late. Do you need more than ten minutes, Ms. Mueller?
I don't.
No, you don't. Okay, take it away. Welcome. And go ahead and introduce yourself.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Ashcraft, council members. I'm Danielle Mueller, Sustainability and Resilience Manager for the city. And I'm here tonight to present on the mid-cycle update of our Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, as well as our local hazard mitigation plan updates. I think the mayor actually very eloquently already gave my presentation for me, so.
That's why you don't need more than ten minutes.
I don't need more than ten minutes, but we'll go forward anyways. So this update is a mid-cycle update. CARP was originally adopted in 2019. We are five years in, and the cart, the plan called for an update after five years. It was a good opportunity for us to evaluate where we've been, where we're going, and to really celebrate the significant success we've had in implementation of this plan. It also was an opportunity to align with the many ongoing initiatives and plans that the city has adopted that really sit under and alongside the CARP and help us to implement this plan through a number of different, a number of other implementation plans, as well as to align with the many state initiatives and plans that have been adopted since 2019. So through this update, we updated the CARP vision and goals to better capture community values. We conducted a greenhouse gas inventory. We updated the greenhouse gas mitigation measures and created action plans. We aligned the resilience component of CARP, the R in CARP, with our city's local hazard mitigation plan, which is a FEMA-approved plan and makes us eligible for FEMA disaster mitigation grants. So we, now we've aligned those two planning processes. And we updated the list of strategies for location-based priority flooding that was included in CARP. I was here presenting on CARP in October, so this presentation is relatively short, focused on the update since that last City Council workshop in October. As the mayor stated, we are on track to meet our goals, our greenhouse gas reduction goals, which is really exciting and not something that every city can say. We have achieved a twenty-nine percent reduction in emissions overall. Per capita, it's a thirty-one percent. And per service population, which is jobs plus population, a forty percent reduction since 2005. So we really are making progress despite population and job growth. The main driver is AMP providing a hundred percent clean electricity that can power our buildings and our vehicles. Natural gas emissions have also decreased six percent since 2005, primarily because of reductions in residential gas usage. That's the work we've been doing to encourage residents to convert their natural gas appliances to electric ones. Overall, usage has been ticking up the last few years, and we have a lot of commercial users that are pretty heavy gas users. But overall, we're trending in the right direction. Our transportation emissions were down twenty-five percent since 2005, mostly because we have cleaner vehicles, we have more electric vehicles, reduced vehicle miles traveled. You can see that was reduced six percent since 2005, and more efficient off-road equipment, which are things like the leaf blowers. We have a leaf blower, gas leaf blower ban, but also better lawn equipment, garden equipment, and backup generators. Vehicle miles traveled are down. But it speaks a lot to our city's mode-share efforts and efforts to encourage people out of their cars and into bicycles and walking and transit. Some of this may still reflect some of the pandemic driving patterns, so we'll have to track that closely and see how that goes over time. I mentioned the strategies for location-based priority flooding. This was something that was initiated in CARP in 2019 and really helped set and focus the priorities for how we're addressing seal of arise and flooding in Alameda in the last five years. So we did some updates to those, to those strategies. We've, as you know, done a lot of work through the Oakland-Alameda Adaptation Committee that's really helped us to refine these locations. So showing here are some of the immediate and ongoing flood risk reduction measures that are really being, many of them implemented by the Public Works Department, and then some of our near and midterm priority projects that we would like to be implementing and are working to implement for seal of arise and future flooding. Significant community engagement. Since we last saw you, we had another community workshop in December. The plan, draft plan, was available for public review in December and January of this year. We visited a number of boards and commissions earlier this year, and we're here today, I guess now, April first. We received a number of public comments that we've incorporated into the draft plan. Overall, really strong support from the community for these efforts. A lot of concern about seal of arise and support for the work that we're doing to increase community resilience on that front. Concerns, some of concern about the difficulty in reducing vehicle miles traveled and wanting to focus on those efforts. Real strong appreciation for the consideration of equity and the focus of equity in this plan, and desire to see that included in our implementation. Some minor proofreading comments. Nothing that resulted in a major policy change to our goals or strategies. I'm going to transition quickly to our 2024 Annual Report, which is also a part of this item. So in 2024, we were busy as always. We completed, as I said, the greenhouse gas inventory and the CARP update. AMP continues to provide a hundred percent clean electricity, which is just so important to everything that we do. As the mayor mentioned, we launched the Alameda Youth Climate Ambassador Program, which we're really excited about. And we are also, you'll hear, have heard and will hear tonight about our public EV charging pilot program that we're excited about. AMP has continued to offer and promote clean transportation and home electrification incentives for customers. We had our first annual home electrification fair in March of last year. We completed a draft of the urban forest plan, and that was out for public review. There was community outreach and a council approval of design concepts for three Oakland-Alameda Adaptation Committee projects. And we have an interactive CARP dashboard that is in development. This is a preview of that dashboard. So our goal is to, on our CARP website, to be able to track and show publicly the progress that we're making on each of our CARP strategies and metrics. And we are hoping to have that launched a little bit later this year. So coming up in the next five years, continuing to expand our public EV charging infrastructure through our pilot programs. We would like to work on building electrification policies and building code improvements to improve the energy efficiency of our built environment. We are holding a second annual home electrification fair. It's going to be May third this year at Faction Brewing, so we hope you can attend. We are trying to secure a band that apparently has a song about heat pumps, which will be very fun. We're going to be working on a tree canopy protection ordinance and implementing the urban forest plan. We are focusing our efforts on adaptation, on a subregional adaptation plan, and we're continuing to work on our near-term priority projects at the Oakland-Alameda Estuary and Bay Farm Island. And we're looking to do some education and outreach around basement flooding. education and outreach around basement flooding and possibly some policies around basement flooding, considering our very high groundwater table that we have in Alameda. We're continuing the Alameda Youth Climate Ambassadors Program that has been very successful in engaging our youth and student clubs. And they are going to be having an Earth Day Corner at Spring Shindig, which they're really excitedly planning. And Sarah just shared with me that we may have Bosco the Pig maybe making an appearance for our youth ambassadors.
Rockstar.
Local rock star. And then all of our efforts across so many departments to implement the Active Transportation Plan, the Transportation Choices Plan, or Zero Waste Plan, and so many, our general plan, so many of our other plans that really help underpin what we do at CARP. And then finally, as it's April 1st, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Earth Month. We have many events happening across the city all month. And if you go to our website, alameda.ca.gov/EarthMonth, we have a really beautifully designed poster with artwork that will be displaying around the city. So I want to say, thanks, Sarah Henry, and our designer, Jose Fernandez, for that graphic design work. And we're looking forward to promoting all of the many events and ways that we're celebrating Earth Month here in Alameda. And so with that, my recommendation tonight is for you to adopt the 2025 Climate Action and Resiliency Plan Mid-Cycle Update, which includes an update to our Hazard Mitigation Plan for FEMA approval and to accept the 2024 CARP Annual Report.
Amazing timing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great report. And I didn't mean to steal your thunder, and I didn't. You do it. So much better than I do. Council, do we have any clarifying questions? I have one. So talk to us a little, if you will, about the basement flooding program. So what would you be looking at? What should residents know or do?
We are scoping that out right now, but we, I should have mentioned, and I apologize for this, we have our excellent consultant team on Zoom with us today. So they're available to answer questions. Eric Yurkovich from Raimi Consulting and Chris May, Dr. Chris May, Alameda resident from Pathways Climate Institute. So they may want to speak to this as well. But in the meantime, we have a high groundwater table. As you know, Dr. Chris May was the lead author of a groundwater study for Alameda that looked at the areas of the city that have a high groundwater and projected where that groundwater will increase with rising sea levels. Basement flooding is often pumped into the gutter, and it's been increasing with rising groundwater. And in some areas and some streets, there's standing water in the gutters all year round that can lead to mosquito problems. In the summer, during rain events, it can reduce stormwater conveyance capacity. So we'd be providing some education to homeowners around ways that they could maybe route floodwaters to their backyard, rain barrels, and their flower beds. When they're remodeling their homes, possibly consider elevating and not digging down, especially in areas with very high groundwater. And we're exploring some policies as well that may help and encourage homeowners to do that, to that work.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have that? I'm just going to see if she's.
Both have run it. Neither have turned on their camera unmuted. They're both available.
Yeah, and I was just staying on the question that I asked, because Ms. Mueller mentioned that the consultants might have something to say. Although I would say, your answer was plenty comprehensive for me. So I think I saw Councilmember Bowler's hand go up, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Jensen. Go ahead.
For the really informative presentation, and it's exciting to see the city do so well on some of these metrics and so quickly. In our correspondence file, we have some suggested changes for language from Richard Bangert that have to do with wildlife habitat. Could you just comment on those five suggested language changes, whether or not you think those have some merit?
I am glad that Dr. Chris May is showing up on the screen here. She and I were talking about this earlier today, and we generally are happy to make the changes that were suggested by Mr. Bangert with a couple of modifications. I could share those right now. On item one.
Just so the public who is listening, and it's kind of small print in that letter, can you just tell us what the item one is?
Sure. So there's a public comment letter from Mr. Richard Bangert that's, I believe, in the attached to the agenda, to the staff report. It's related to one of the strategies for location-based priority flooding around the South Shore Beaches area. And he has some suggested edits to the text in that for that strategy.
Okay. But you were saying that you wouldn't accept that.
We generally agree with his edits and feel comfortable making them. The only suggestion that Dr. May recommended was rather than saying marshland, that we use the word tidal wetland, which is a more consistent word and aligns with FEMA's definition. And then we had some minor changes to his suggested language around the permitting challenges that we would face for fill, possible fill on the South Shore Beaches and along the wetlands.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. We can discuss further when we're beyond clarifying questions. Dr. May, did you want to add anything for either of our consultants? And if you do, just unmute.
I think Danielle did a great job. Nothing further to add. Thank you.
All right. Okay, anything further from our other expert consultant? No. Back to Councilmember Bowler. That was it. Okay, Councilmember Jensen, clarifying question?
Thank you. With regard to the inventory of the CFC, or the inventory of our emissions, that's really appreciated. And I know that we have been reviewing and looking at the areas where we can cut back, and especially with the job that AMP is doing, and as we will discuss later, are just our residents helping by buying more electric vehicles. What I wanted to ask is, I saw the list that includes gasoline-powered vehicles and equipment and natural gas, et cetera. And I wanted to ask whether hydrofluorocarbons are included in the inventory and whether there's any efforts or activity. I know that, as you mentioned, our student leaders have been looking at that area, but whether that's something that we are looking at as well to reduce our greenhouse gases?
Hydrofluorocarbons, which are refrigerants used in many different systems, air conditioning, as well as like grocery store refrigerators and restaurants, is not part of the greenhouse gas inventory that was conducted, the protocol that we followed. And Eric Yurkovich would be able to speak in greater detail to this. The protocol does not, that we follow the standard protocol, does not include HFCs as part of that inventory. But we know that that is a priority and that leakage of HFCs and refrigerants can be a significant greenhouse gas contributor. So CARP includes, for the first time, or now includes, a discussion of refrigerants and the need to address refrigerants in the plan. It's covered in two sort of sections. One is around city buildings and the opportunity to switch to climate, more climate-friendly refrigerants when possible, especially when new systems are being purchased, to reduce leakage and to advocate for stricter state standards, and around private buildings to educate building owners to provide guidelines and help them and encourage them to comply with state standards. The state does have some pretty aggressive policies that it's pursued around refrigerants. It banned HFCs from new refrigerant installation starting in 2022, and just starting this year required even lower global warming potential refrigerants in new refrigerators. So we think, and we looked at what some other cities were doing, and the approach that we took was really around encouraging and supporting those state standards, and then eventually encouraging the state to adopt even stricter standards.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. And that kind of segues right into my next question, which is more of a question and some input from you with regard to how the plan is related, because as we know, the city of Alameda did pass an ordinance to restrict natural gas hookups in new buildings, and that was overturned by the Supreme Court. And I would like for you to comment. I know that that can be, natural gas, as you mentioned, is a big part of our greenhouse gas emissions. So I understand, and I know that you probably have more information about what the state may be doing, the California Air Natural Resources Board and other legislation or judicial action to restore that.
So that is the law that was overturned, so that we cannot ban natural gas usage in buildings at the local level, or at the state level, I believe. The California State Building Code is making pretty significant strides to require and encourage natural gas or electric appliances in new construction. So there's a lot that we were requiring that is now being covered by the state. There's still some areas that the state does not cover, but many, much new construction is now likely to default to a heat, electric heat pump or electric water heater. There is some more that we could also do to encourage electrification when people are doing remodels. But we would have to make sure that we follow those federal guidelines. But we can encourage people and/or give them options to choose electric or gas, depending on the policy and the choices that they make. And I'm not sure if Eric has any more that you want to add there about opportunities?
Did you want to chime in, please?
I was just going to say, thanks for having us remotely this evening. Danielle did a very good job of kind of walking through the approaches. We talked a little bit about this at the October meeting, you'll recall as well, and kind of laid out a couple of different options for both new construction, whether we take an energy performance approach, which Danielle just outlined, and is consistent with the way the state is moving, as well as an air quality approach, which is consistent with what the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has done in terms of looking at the public health impacts of natural gas appliances. So there's a number of options that the city can take, and many cities around the state are now pivoting based on the recent legal court case to take one of these two approaches for new construction, and then looking at options for both existing buildings as well.
Thank you. Thank you for the great report, too.
All right. Any other clarifying questions, Councilmember Desok?
Thank you. Just on the map that has all the different points, going similar to what Councilmember Bowler had raised, but focusing on that area of South Shore, I think it's number 11 Shoreline Drive, Crown Beach Adaptation. So isn't that East Bay Regional Park? So can you give us a glimpse as to, you know, would they be, are we making a recommendation to them, and they would be the ultimate decision-maker? Should it be a tidal wetlands, which I think is exciting? So if you could just speak to that?
So I don't think the proposal is to make the beach a tidal wetland, but we have Elsie Romer Bird Sanctuary, which is a tidal wetland, and we want to preserve it. Wetlands and marshes are all around the bay or at risk of drowning because they can't keep up with the sediment required to stay above the waterline. So that's something that we really want to focus on. We have seen sand that was, you know, we've seen a lot of erosion at South Shore Beach. A lot of that sand we're seeing show up at Elsie Romer, which is maybe a positive co-benefit of the loss of sand that we've experienced at South Shore Beach. But we would like to do a sand study or a geomorphology study to better understand exactly where the sand is going and how we can help it, encourage it, keep it at the beach where we want it, but also support the Elsie Romer Bird Sanctuary. Dr. Chris May is the expert on this one, so I turn it to her.
Related to that, because I thought that the original, the initial Climate Action Plan, which is the big document, I thought it did identify the beach in the long term as being more, less of a recreational beach, but more like of a wetland. I thought that. And also, the Crab Cove area, which isn't identified on this map, so if you can speak to also Crab Cove.
Right. So these are East Bay Regional Park assets, and we are working closely with East Bay Regional Park on the strategy. They already have a vision plan for Crab Cove, so we plan to be incorporating that. We're developing and going to be focusing this year on our subregional adaptation plan, which is part of the BCDC Regional Shoreline Adaptation Planning requirements that are now in place. So we are going to be focusing on every section of the shoreline through that planning process. One of them that we know is of interest and critical is the South Shore Beach area. So that is something that we'll be discussing and looking at what sort of the medium and long-term options are for that beach area. The first step is that we want to complete a sand study, a sand movement study, to better understand the issues on that shoreline. And we've applied for a state grant with East Bay Regional Parks for sand replenishment to replace some of the sand that has been lost in recent storms. Sand was last placed there by East Bay Regional Park in 2014, and much of it is gone. It was very successful at the time, and part of the reason that we have snowy plovers overwintering there is because of the sand, the coarse sand that was brought in during that sand placement. So we would like to restore some of the sand that's been lost in recent storms. But we want to do more than just continue to replace sand as it gets lost, and we'd like to identify some nature-based solutions that can help keep the sand in place. And then think about in the longer term, how we want to adapt that beach with sea level rise.
Yeah, no, because I think, I don't, maybe through your research in the coming months, if you could let us know, is there any other city in California, let alone the country, who has contemplated kind of natural solutions to rising sea levels that Alameda has? And that's why I could have swore that I saw the long-term solution for the beach, the beach along shoreline, was to be, you know, to have it kind of like a tidal wetland, as well as Crab Cove. And then you add onto that what we're doing at Deepav Park, and you add to that what, you know, we discussed several weeks ago about near the golf course. And also, there's, I think, a 10-acre area that we're contemplating for the furthest western part of Alameda Point, along with the columbarium. I think we're going to open up a 10-acre area and allow it to be a wetland. And so I wonder if, through your research, if you can kind of identify, is there any other city who has welcomed, you know, retreating from the rising seas like Alameda in California or in the country? I think it's something to be proud of.
I think it is something to be proud of. I think there's a lot of cities that are considering a range of options. And now with this BCDC planning requirement, I think we're going to be seeing a lot more, a lot more cities trying to figure out kind of what their long-term plan is. I do think we're a model, and we've been a model in the region for how we've collaborated with the number of jurisdictions and community organizations to kind of collectively plan for our future. And I think the fact that we're doing it that early allows us to have more options and to be more thoughtful in our approach to how we are going to address this significant challenge.
And just quickly, for members of the public listening, it's kind of a choice between, you know, a managed retreat from sea level rise or the foster-city approach of creating these, you know, huge seawalls everywhere. So.
Well, I don't know if it's quite that black and white, but those are some of the options. We're also, where we have space, where we don't have space, seawalls tend to be the solution that's required, where we have a little bit more horizontal space. We can do things like levees. We can have more gradual slopes that allow for beaches and natural habitat and access to the beach and that kind of thing, which is what we want. We want to create shorelines that are places that people enjoy and can be at and can enjoy, and the habitat can thrive. And we want to maintain our views and our access. So where we have enough space, that's really the preferred approach, for sure.
Thank you.
And I will just chime in. I recommend this book all the time, but California Against the Sea. And it does emphasize the fact that there's no one-size-fits-all solution, but I do brag all the time about the collaborative approach the city has taken. the time about the collaborative approach the city has taken. Any other clarifying questions? Vice Mayor Pryor?
Uh, yes, I have a very short question. Um, it's about the CARP dashboard. Um, I was just wondering how often, uh, it, it's going to be updated, um, because it seems like it's reported. I like the idea a lot. I, that, that's it.
We'll be updating it annually with each annual report.
Okay.
Councilmember Bowler?
Uh, thank you. I just was thinking back to your comments on the proposed changes for the wildlife habitat language. You mentioned that you had, that, that staff has some concerns about the language with the fill, and I'm just wondering if we're, if we're gonna do a motion to, if we end up doing a motion to suggest these changes with, what types of variations would you suggest? Because you already suggested one about the, um, wetlands language, right? Can you restate that? And anything else that you think we should add?
Um, I'm gonna turn it to Dr. May to, she proposed the edits, and I think they're, um,
And I'm just wondering, and I, and this is a question, but I'm wondering whether maybe we would save that for a discussion and coming to a motion, and maybe hear a public comment unless you have
I read that, of the courts, but I, I'm just thinking that that might inform public comment if they understood what staff's position was on the language, because it was a little bit unclear on the fill portion, I think. There might be a way to summarize it quickly, too.
Whatever.
Okay, I'm gonna look to Dr. May.
Hi, Dr. May.
Hi, I'm happy to summarize. Um, yeah, the question wanted us to, um, uh, clarify that BCDC has changed some of the rules on bay fill, and that bay fill on beaches and wetlands, um, could be acceptable for adaptation. Um, I'm actually on the Engineering Criteria Review Board for BCDC on the safety of fills. So that's not quite the angle that BCDC is taking. So we're revising the language to say that, um, fill at the Elsie Romer Bird Sanctuary to help maintain those marshes, um, for sea level rise would be not have permitting challenges with BCDC, but fill to maintain the beach, um, is, does not fall under that same bay fill, uh, modification that BCDC has made. Um, the beach is not a natural habitat. Um, so it's just a clarification between, there's a difference between bay fill for the beach and how that is permitted versus bay fill to maintain the wetland habitat and how that is permitted.
And by bay fill, we are talking about, um, fill that goes into the bay.
Does that suffice for you, Councilmember Bowler? Okay, and, yes, and when we get into the discussion, I'll, I'll add to that. Any further clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
We do. Okay, there's no remote at this time, so, um, they will get three minutes each. The first is Tyler Middleton.
Welcome, Speaker Middleton.
Counsel, counsel, my name is Tyler Middleton, and I'm proud to have been born and raised right here in Alameda. As a community member who deeply cares about sustainability and environment, I'm also excited to share that I've recently joined Bee Green Recycling and Supply spearheading our, spearheading our community outreach and marketing efforts. Like many of you, I was not familiar with Bee Green. By learning more about Alameda's CARP and Bee Green's capabilities, I immediately saw an opportunity not just to help our city better achieve its CARP goals, but to potentially save the environment money and build stronger local partnerships. Recently, Alameda approved a five-year contract with Olivera Enterprises to source and procure SB 1383 compliant organic materials. While I don't have all the details, details behind Alameda's decision, I do want to highlight a few critical, uh, advantages of conserving a local alternative like Bee Green. Uh, proximity to emissions, Olivera Enterprises is located nearly 50 miles away, meaning transporting material significantly increases greenhouse gas emissions, contrary to CARP's intent. Bee Green's facilities, however, are located conveniently less than two miles from where I'm standing, right across High Street Bridge. Um, another point I would like to make is that CARP emphasizes addressing social vulnerability. I'm addressing the updated revised 2025 CARP plan. Um, many Alameda neighborhoods disproportionately impacted by climate change are home to our seniors, lower income families, and renters. Bee Green operates in the heart of East Oakland, serving precisely these vulnerable communities, which, uh, while make, while make, which makes partnering with Bee Green a direct investment into local resilience and equity. Um, lastly, I'd like to address cost-effectiveness waste diversion, um, directly addressing the, uh, franchise agreement with ACI in Alameda. Um, for disposing construction demolition house or project waste, it is particularly expensive for Alameda residents. As a result, uh, some residents avoid these costs directly leading to more illegal to crib site dumping. Bee Green offers these waste diversion services at more than one-third the cost. Although current contracts restrict residents from using Bee Green services, reconsidering such restrictions could significantly improve local waste management, compliance, and resident satisfaction. The updated 2025 CARP promotes transitioning to electric fleet vehicles. Bee Green is a certified dealer and service provider for zero emission electric outdoor power equipment, further aligning perfectly with Alameda's electrification goals. In closing, Alameda is making meaningful strides towards sustainability through its climate action and resiliency plan. By exploring partnerships with Bee Green, a state-permitted facility in Oakland's largest processor of construction debris, inert debris, and green waste, we have the opportunity to significantly reduce transportation emissions, lower costs, promote equity, and strengthen local community ties. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Debbie Ryan?
Welcome, Speaker Ryan. Is she still here?
Sheila.
She left.
Ruth Abby.
Welcome, Speaker Abby.
Good evening, Mayor Azias Trapp, and members of the, um, City Council. I'm Ruth Abby from Community Action for Sustainable Alameda. I wanted to, um, check in with you and, of course, uh, endorse the recommendation to adopt the mid-cycle review of the Climate Action Resiliency Plan. I also wanted to give you a little bit of history of CASA and where we're going in the future. So CASA was developed as a collaboration between city staff and local, um, advocates to provide a conduit for action for Alamedaans to make a difference in climate and resiliency. And, um, that a collaboration was really important because it provided some flexibility and opportunities that you might not get in a regular city commission. So we don't currently have a sustainability commission, or a public works commission, or a zero waste commission, but we do have this collaboration, and CASA has supported a number of the initiatives within the departments. We work closely with Public Works, of course, with Planning and Transportation, the Public Utilities Board, on the implementation of strategies to reduce the, um, climate action plans. We also collaborate with a number of other, um, uh, non-government organizations in Alameda, of which we have a number dedicated to these issues, including Bike Walk Alameda, the REAP Center. We, uh, work with 100,000 K Trees and the Rotary Club, and, uh, so many opportunities to support the students, the faculty, uh, Alameda Unified School District on these initiatives locally. So we wanted, in our next five years of work, to, uh, really closely align with the Climate Action Resiliency Plan update and create a work plan and a conduit for all Alamedaans to provide a place to work on these issues as we have some, you know, we're a little disheartened about activism at the low, at this, um, federal level in terms of climate achievement, but we know that we can make a huge impact locally. And, uh, my very first, uh, when I first graduated from college back in, oh, a long time ago, my first project was our, with, with Nancy Skinner, who was our, uh, former state senator and was on the Berkeley City Council at the time, and formed an organization called Local Solutions for Global Pollution, specifically to demonstrate how we at the local level can make a huge impact on climate. So what we will work, we endorse the, um, opportunity moving forward with the update for CARP, and we rededicate ourselves to provide that strategy for Alamedaans to get involved, uh, every day in making a difference in climate and resiliency. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Oh, okay, we will close public comment on, um, item 7C, and, um, we'll open it up to counsel, comment, and a motion. Um, who wants to start? I, actually, I just want to throw in, I do appreciate the comments and, um, the input. Um, when it comes to the language that's gonna end up in the report, I will always defer to the experts that the city, um, staff has engaged, because I, I do think they have the background. I mean, I love to have public input, but my, my final, um, choice will be to go with someone whose profession it is and who's very up-to-date and current on these, um, topics. So, um, uh, any, um, anyone wants to start, have a motion? It's your pleasure. Councilmember Jensen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you for the comments and for, um, the presentation. It's clear that we're moving in the right direction, and, and the, the mid, mid-cycle report shows that, that, but there's still work to do. As Ruth Abby of CASA pointed out, um, that we have a lot of partners in the community, and we can even have more. So I'm optimistic that by working with partners and taking advantage of, of the regional updates and the, the CDBG, et cetera, the changes that have happened here, will, will, these opportunities will allow us to continue and Alameda can be the municipal green leader. So I would like to make a motion with that to approve and, um, endorse this mid-cycle update.
I second. Okay, we've had a motion by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor. Any further discussion? Call for a vote? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bowler, please.
Staff's feedback, some of the proposed changes for the wildlife habitat. I would just move to add that, those changes based on staff, the staff language, if, I don't know if that's already anticipated as part of this motion, or no?
I, my motion was related to the, um, the information that was provided with regard to responding to, uh, Mr. Banger's comments. So that was implicitly included.
So staff's feedback and the, and the consultants?
Yeah.
Are we on the same page?
Yes, yes, I just, I, and I guess there's been a second for that already? Okay, okay, I understand now. Thank you.
All right, all right. Ready to go?
No.
No, one more comment. Go ahead.
Quick, a quick comment. This is exciting stuff, but it's really to the next generation that, that we're doing this planning, and, um, the next time we get an update, I really look forward to what the, um, the youth board has to say that was created as part of this recently. So, thank you.
I think we need to attend the spring shindig. What's, what's the date on that? Do we have a date? April 19th? Okay. All right, we'll get that. We'll get that on our calendars. All right, well, we have had a motion by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? I didn't hear any. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Ms. Mueller, and to our consultants, um, excellent presentation and input, and this is really exciting time, and, um, I, yes, I'm proud of the work we've made. Okay, we have been going for two hours. We are going to take a break. It's 9:04. Let's be back in our seats by 9:15? All right, see you at 9:15. Water.
I would have thought Erin would have accepted. It was just good information.
Okay, we are back in session and we move on now to item 7D, right?
Correct.
Madam Cook, would you, come on up? Would you introduce the item?
Recommendation to accept the economic development status update and provide feedback regarding economic development efforts and activities.
Good evening and welcome. And would you like, how much time would you like? Because this is a pretty meaty report. Really interesting.
13 minutes if I could.
We'll call it 15. We do increments of five. Dividing, but no. Okay, but I need a vote. So a motion to add five minutes to this staff time.
So moved.
Been moved by Vice Mayor Prior, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. All those in favor, signify by stating aye. Aye. All right, you have 15 minutes. Welcome. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Dwayne Dolman. I'm the fairly new Economic Development Division Manager for the city. So tonight I'm here to give a status update of the economic development program. So when I started six months ago about, it was a good time for us to kind of look at how the economic development program, where we were at that time and how we wanted to move the, the program forward. So we looked at the program and decided that what we want to do overall, we want to better meet the needs of our existing businesses. So that was one of our goals, typical kind of business retention. We also wanted to enact a more robust business and investment attraction effort. And then lastly, we wanted to have a program that not only did the basic business retention and attraction, but we wanted to be able to dynamically respond to current issues that were coming up and pressing issues. We know, for example, the Okinawa Mid Access Project is, is coming up. So dealing with that. And then also I'll talk quite a bit tonight on the Park and Webster Street vacancies. So overall, we're keeping, you know, the existing programs that we're already doing. But then we want to update our core economic development activities in four kind of main areas. Business attraction, business retention. The third area is we want to do a better job, I think, of integrating Alameda Point into our citywide economic development program. So integrating those activities and those businesses into the economic development effort. And then lastly, to use real-time data kind of technology to better support and be better efficient with our economic development activities. So here we listed our existing economic development programs. I'm not going to go over all of them. But just to kind of get an overall feel for what we're currently doing in economic development, I'll highlight some of them. We have a very active facade improvement program. We're very involved with public arts. Workforce development program. We just had a youth career fair over at Ensignal High School and that was very successful. We do things like guaranteed basic income and special events. And then just two weeks ago, we had our restaurant week with a, with a special event kickoff at Faction. So that's kind of an overview of the existing economic development programs that we have. And for the next two slides, I'll go over how the program is kind of adapting and moving forward in these kind of four areas. I'll spend more time talking about the vacancy program, but as far as attraction is concerned, we're, we want to have more broker interaction. So brokers that, that, that work in the shopping centers, brokers that work in our downtown, brokers that represent our industrial parks. From a marketing perspective, we're partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, putting together a choose Alameda business attraction website. So that should be coming live fairly soon. We're again doing our annual San Francisco business time insert that we use to kind of promote Alameda and attract businesses. And then on the attraction side, we joined Team California as, as another way for us to get out there and meet companies. On the retention side, we, we have a partnership now with the, with the East Bay Small Business Development Center. So they cover Concha Costa and Alameda Counties. And the benefit of that is bringing those services directly to Alameda businesses. Because they cover two counties, they're kind of spread fairly thin. So we're contracting with them to do work directly in Alameda. The first phase of that is they do small business advising twice a month at the Chamber of Commerce on Tuesday afternoons. We started in January and we, I think they've had something like 30 businesses that have gone through that. You can sign up online. It's very popular and a lot of businesses are using that service. And then the next phase of what we're doing with them is they're going to do workshops for us. So we've picked a restaurant series for running a restaurant. And then we have a series that's going to be planned on digital marketing. So those are coming up in the future. We're upgrading our business visitation program. We just, we just did some targeted business surveys. We're working quite a bit with the Chamber of Commerce in their, in their efforts. And then you had talked about the mayor about the Okinawa Mid Access Project. And we're doing a website that's going to be listing the business resources. Just real quick, I'll talk about the, kind of the, some of the technology that we're using. Many of you have probably heard of Salesforce. And so we're implementing a CRM customer relation management program that's really geared just for economic development work. And so the thought is that will help us be more efficient in how we're tracking the businesses that we're working with and next steps and things to do. So we're implementing that. Zoom Prospector talks about, what that is, is basically that provides data that site selectors look for when they're analyzing a community. And so it presents that in a very kind of efficient way and they can search on that. So that's something that we're going to be using as well as retail. Leash track is a way for us to find out easily what retailers are expanding. And we'll be working with our shopping centers and our brokers on using that service for our retail shopping centers. And then lastly, for Alameda Point, we're contracting with a financial consultant that will, that will do financial assessments for, for companies. And that's another business resource we're going to be providing and we're rolling that out kind of on a pilot basis for the companies out of Alameda Point. We're going to be working with the Spirits Alley tenants and helping them through the process of the, of the shade structures. And especially, you know, identifying the biological opinion and working kind of through that process so that they can, they can have shade structures that meet those requirements. Because that's important for them attracting businesses and, I mean, attracting people to come to their businesses. Looking at the wayfinding, kind of place miking signs at Alameda Point, there's been a lot that's been kind of analyzed and taken down. So that definitely needs a refresh. And then working with our base reuse department counterparts on their maritime strategy. So the rest of the presentation, I want to get into the storefront, what we're calling the storefront vacancy assistance program. Starting out, I think we all understand how, how Webster and Park Street, those business districts are, are vital to the identity of Alameda. And so when we looked at that, we, you know, the goal was we want to make those, those districts even more vibrant than they are now. And in order to do that, we need to address vacancies that are there. And that's really why this program was established. So the first thing we did was kind of look at, you know, kind of the numbers and what are we dealing with? In the, in the handouts, you have a much more detailed kind of spreadsheet, but just some overall numbers. There's about 1.5 million square feet of overall retail inventory in the, in the Waba and Daba business districts. The overall vacancy rate is actually fairly low. So for, for Daba, it's about 4.8%, about 50,000 square feet. And for Waba, a little bit lower than that, about 3.4%, about 15,000 square feet. So overall, between the two districts, we have about 65,000 square feet of vacancy. And currently that's made up of, of 26 properties. So the next slide I'll go into, when we looked at, at the vacancies in those 26 properties, rather than have a kind of a one, you know, one size fits all approach to how we're going to assist with them, we thought it was better to have a targeted kind of assistance. So we put together a database that has all the properties, what's going on with them, where they're located. And, and the next slide I'll, I'll go into is going to kind of walk us through what that, who those properties are and kind of what that target assistance is going to be. So we really broke it down to kind of four categories. So the first category we're calling almost there. And these are properties that the space is ready to go. It's actively being marketed. And so from an economic development perspective, our goal is then to assist them with, okay, what is your marketing strategy? How can we help you find a tenant? You're very close. The next category we're calling work in progress. And these are properties that they're actively being proved for either a new tenant they've already identified or they're ready to bring it to market. So for our work then, we would be assisting them to kind of troubleshoot. Okay, you know, are there any kind of permitting issues that, that are there that we can help you with? And what is your kind of outreach strategy? How can we get you through that process? And then how can we help you market your properties? The third category we're calling projects stalled. And these are, you know, the owners involved in the property, but it's really, it's been vacant for, for at least a year due to different kind of barriers. These could be physical barriers. It could be environmental. Could be a lot of different things. So from our standpoint, our, our work then is to assist them and how do we overcome those barriers? So from our standpoint, our work then is to assist them and how do we overcome those barriers to get this project back on track? And the last category, we're calling unmotivated owners. So these are properties that have been vacant for a while. And for a variety of issues, the owners are, you know, either unwilling or unmotivated to move the property forward. So in this case, you know, our work is then assisting them, okay, what are the underlying kind of issues? What are some alternatives to how we can deal with those issues? And then it's directly to kind of outreach to those owners. And I have here kind of the carrot, the stick approach. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we're outreach specifically to those owners. So I've talked about kind of the, you know, the overall categories and how we've assessed the situation and kind of our target kind of work that we're going to be doing. I also want to point out that this program also involves, you know, strategies and kind of systematic improvements. How do we improve the process? So the first thing I wanted to point out is the work of improving the internal and external kind of coordination and communication. And this is really in the city departments. So that kind of interdepartmental coordination, so working with our department with planning and building to identify, are there any kind of systemic barriers that we're running across that are kind of common in a lot of these properties? Whether that's the permitting process, or the zoning process, or the building codes, are there things that we should be addressing that are kind of stalling these barriers to improving these buildings and finding tenants? And then lastly, working with code enforcement on, you know, developing these kind of enhanced enforcement tools. And you talked about this, Mayor, in your State of the City of having a vacant building monitoring fee and having, you know, minimum property maintenance standards that commercial properties have to maintain. And so those are things also that are important for us to enforce and more of the kind of the stick approach for working with these kind of property owners. Getting down to kind of more details, so we talked about the overall approach. Now, when we're talking about unmotivated owners, so our outreach, we sent out in January, we sent out letters to all eight of those properties in that category. And those outreach letters came from ourselves and from Waba and Daba. And it was basically saying, you know, these districts are important to us, and you have a vacancy in this district. And so we're trying to improve the area and we're trying to address this. So here are all the areas that we can help you. We can help you do this, this, and this, so, but we just need you to outreach to us. And so those letters went out in January, and now we're looking at a second round of letters for people that aren't responding. And we'll be coming to you, Mayor, to get your assistance on, and maybe that letter comes from yourself and kind of reinforces that issue. We already talked about reviewing the kind of the permit and zoning. We're starting next month, we're going to do a monthly kind of walkthrough with Waba and Daba and ourselves to kind of, you know, essentially get boots on the ground to kind of really see these properties. And then we're going to be doing the same thing with property owners. So to kind of get a feel for, all right, what, walking through these buildings, what are the issues with the buildings? How can we address that? How is it impacting others in the neighborhood? And then down to, this is my last slide, down into even more specific, so in that kind of category, so these are buildings that have been vacant for a while, it's empty. People are wondering what's going on with that, what's happening there? So one of the ideas we came up with is putting window clinks in these spaces. And this is, we're working with Waba and Daba to essentially, these pictures are then types of businesses that they would like to attract, that we knew we need a shoe store, we need this. And so the slogan down at the bottom is picture your business here and be part of this fabulous downtown. And then the QR code would go to the Economic Development Department, so that really kind of twofold benefit. So we improve the space, we make it visually look better. As people are going by, they can kind of visualize, oh, this is a space, maybe I know someone who could open up a shoe store. And then it's just another avenue for us to market that space. And once we receive those calls, then we can forward that to the property owners and the brokers and then kind of start that process. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions about the programs and get your feedback.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dollman. I have a couple of questions, I imagine, others do too. Let me just, well, it's on my mind, let me just ask. One of the slides you showed was the big, beautiful Bank of America building at the corner of Park Street and Santa Clara Avenue. And I was thinking, as I was looking at that, it really is a throwback to an earlier era because I don't think that many people do in-person banking anymore, it's, you know, on our phones, it's online. So what, I mean, where would you begin with a business like that?
Yes.
A building like that?
So I think that type of building falls into the category of, you know, some issues that the building itself has. So back when banks had two-story buildings, then you could, you know, they left and you could find another one. But one of the, a couple of issues with that particular building is now you have a size of building that is typically too big for small retailers. So you have a size kind of issue that you're dealing with. Who, what retailer out there wants a space that's 5,000 square feet versus a typical maybe 2,000 square feet? It also has some issues with bathrooms and where those are located. And just kind of the layout issue itself. So I think, you know, one of the things that we talked about, and we're probably going to be coming back to the council under our facade improvement program, is to, you know, one potential solution is for us to look at other ways that we can expand that program into other categories. And some of those categories may mean, you know, dealing with kind of the functional obsolescence of buildings. And not only are we, you know, could we use the program to upgrade the exterior of the building, but we could also address some of those things that are kind of a hindrance to how you're going to be renting it out. So I think that's an example of a building that we have to figure out who could fit into that kind of space, and then what are the kind of physical improvements that have to take place in order to do that?
Okay, thank you. I mean, it does look like a bit of a challenge. The, just walking down Park Street in the last couple of days, I've noticed a couple of buildings that have big piece of plywood over their plate glass door or window. Coffee Cultures was one of them. I was just there yesterday. And Glory Shoes down closer to us at Alameda Avenue and Park Street. What's happening there and what are we doing to maybe avoid that sort of thing happening again? But what happened? I mean, it wasn't an earthquake, right?
Right. No, so that's, so one of the categories that I think we're going to be looking at for the facade program is is dealing with safety factors. And how to, you know, not just putting up things like awnings and paint and making the buildings look nicer, how do you deal with the dressing? Where people are now driving cars into, and that's what happened at the shoe place. How do you deal with some of these safety issues that you're going to have to look at in the design of buildings? And so that's an issue that will most likely come back and say, at a minimum, we'd like to amend the facade program to handle these kind of categories. And that could mean, you know, different design, it could mean ballards up front. We're having discussions with these businesses, and that seems to be a new trend. And especially cars, so we've, before it was kind of break the window and hop in, now it's, we're going to drive our car through the front. So it's dealing with those type of issues as well.
And are you also working with the police department I referenced in my State of the City Lieutenant Park, who's overseeing the business liaison work? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. And then finally, I, oh, and I will just, this isn't a question, I would be happy to sign any letter you want me to sign to motivate these these businesses that aren't responsive. All right, thank you. Councilmember Jensen, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the report, Madam Dollman, and the update, and really want to also note that the vacancy rate that you've mentioned, and you spent all that time on it, but it is less than 5%, which is considering the economy and interest rates, et cetera, that's pretty good. And I think it demonstrates, as we know, that Park Street and Webster Business Districts are very crucial to Alameda, but it demonstrates the partnership, I think, with the Economic Development Department and with the Park Street Downtown Business Association, Alameda Business Association, Webster, West Alameda Business Association. So those are great partners, but we have other business districts as well. And I'm thinking specifically and wondering, my question has to do with, what are we doing to improve business opportunities and to get businesses into places like the Harbor Bay Shopping Center, which is a key business district for many residents of Alameda, and it's been vacant, many of the shops and stores there have been vacant for quite a while, so can you address that, please?
Sure. Before I do that, I should point out, I don't think I talked about it strongly enough in my presentation, that this work we're doing on Park and Webster Street is really hand-in-hand with Waba and Daba and those partnerships. So we have monthly board meetings with them, we have monthly staff meetings with them, now we're doing walkthroughs with them, so we couldn't do this. I don't want it to be that this is just us, this is a very strong partnership that we have, and it takes both of our efforts to do that, so I just wanted to point that out. I think then, what you're asking about is more of kind of our retail strategy of how we then are working with shopping centers essentially to address their vacancies and their kind of center.
Well, that's my question, and as you point out, we have a strong partnership with Waba and Daba, and they're working very closely with, to address any needs and to address the retail vacancies. But we have other parts of Alameda, especially the Shopping Center on Bay Farm Island, that doesn't have a business district or association that is supportive. And that, for whatever reason, that is, has demonstrating much, much higher vacancies than we're seeing in our commercial districts. So how are we addressing that?
Right. So in that case, it's more of a, you know, rather than a program kind of basis, that's much more of a one-on-one type of basis. So what we do in those cases, then we're meeting with that property owner to talk about kind of where they are. So some of the tools that I talked about, specifically like Retail Lease Track. So once we meet with that property owner, which we have with that individual, then it's kind of like the same question we're asking for the property owners in downtown, but now it's with a shopping center, okay, what is your approach? You have three vacancies in your center, and what is your kind of your outreach approach? So then how we can assist is that we would then, we could look up retailers. We go to, I don't know if you're familiar with an organization called ICSC. So we go to ICSC conferences and basically we're an additional marketing arm for their property. Now, in that particular case, it does require, I mean, we talked about a Bank of America building. You know, it does require when you have a shopping center that's older, that there has to be that kind of cooperation of, okay, you know, what are you doing to kind of fix up this center? What are some improvements you can make? So that's definitely a factor in that particular center, but to answer your question, our job then is more individual to meet with them and say, these are the tools that we can bring, and this is how we can help you find retailers.
Well, and I appreciate that, and so I want to just go a little bit further because what if you have an owner of an aging shopping center that doesn't particularly have an incentive or have a need or interest in filling the vacancies?
I mean, that's a difficult challenge. You'll have some owners that are very invested, and they're willing to put money in and they're upgrading their centers. You'll have some owners who may be out of town, maybe have other properties. They're getting rent, it's maybe below-market rent, but they're still getting rent. So unless you have money that's available to say, we'll partner with you and do like a shopping center facade improvement, it's a real challenge to get owners to invest in properties and fix up a center to be able to get more tenants.
And I appreciate that. I want to appreciate that these are noted and that this is, our economic development is working on those. But as you say, one thing that you may have overlooked too and left out is that the property tax basis for some of these properties is not, it doesn't make it really necessary to, the rents may pay the entire property tax bill, so why bother to do any marketing, which is an expense in itself? And those things are issues, and I know you briefly touched on the vacancy monitoring fees. So if you could just expand on that, because you may be aware, but you haven't been here that long. But I think that that's something that, as you mentioned, we have incentives, but we also need to have, you know, sticks, we need to have penalties. And so if you could just expand a little bit, it's in the report, but I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that, and specifically how that might be used to encourage places like, that have a high, very high vacancy rate, like the Bay Farm, Harbor Bay Shopping Center.
And I may call on our, I may call on our planning department too, if they're willing to talk specifically about that. But I don't know if they're. I mean, I think, what I would say is that the challenge is that you can penalize owners through fees and through assessments and through and creating minimum kind of standards for what they have to do with their properties. But ultimately, there's very little that we can do for people that don't want to invest. We can help them find tenants. We can, we can, but there's very little we can do if they're not willing to do that themselves.
I wonder if I could just join the conversation, and I hear exactly what you're saying. And I will, this is Q and A, but it's complicated situation. It might be that an owner passed away and there's some complicated family dynamics. But what I wanted to ask you, and you mentioned planning, and I don't think we have anyone here from planning, but you know, that property is one of three shopping centers in Alameda that we rezoned as part of our last Housing Element update to be a combination of residential and retail. And I'm wondering if in the economic development strategies, and I think it's really exciting what you're proposing, but I'm wondering if that would also include reaching out to planning, working with them to see if, and I say that realizing that this is possibly not an opportune time to attract development because there's just so much uncertainty. But if there were some developers of housing that might be attracted to do that infill housing, because, you know, for so many reasons, it's an attractive location, utilities are there, there's a bus line, and just, you know, adding to the retail mix, maybe, well, retail and residential mix that way. So do you work across departments?
Yeah, and I think one of the tools that we could use, which I have not used here, but use in other cities, is we've done, we've hired consultants to help us kind of run numbers to give to property owners. So to do an analysis essentially on, okay, if you invest this much in your property, this is what your rate of return could be, this is what you could get. And running those numbers on whether it's straight retail or adding residential to your property. So that's another tool that we could use in meeting with people that are kind of on the fence or deciding what they would possibly do with their property. We could help them run that kind of analysis.
Back to you, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. I think you got the gist of my concerns here. And I would like to just end by saying, I can mention in my comments as well, but that this should be an area as we've, we are progressing, as you point out very well in the report, with our commercial districts. But our shopping centers are important neighborhood commercial districts as well. So we need to improve access and improve participation there.
Thank you.
Any clarifying questions, Council Vice Mayor?
Yes, I was wondering, so you had said that you sent out a first round of letters in January, and I was wondering what the response has been. Have you gotten any response?
Of the, I believe, eight letters that we sent out, we didn't get any direct responses, which maybe is not surprising, kind of given the description actually of the category. But we did have ancillary evidence, so like in one case, they hired a different broker. But we did have ancillary evidence, so like in, in one case, they hired a different broker and that broker contacted us. In another case, they dropped their rents. So even though they didn't get back to us and we're working with them or trying to get in touch with them and have kind of concrete evidence of what they're thinking of doing, we had three cases where there was work that was done, whether it was a direct result of our letter or just the market that was telling them. But as we meet with all of them individually and go to our second round, hopefully we'll get more of those kind of responses.
Okay, and that was my follow-up question is, how are you following up with them? But you have met with them, is.
So in this, in these, so in these three cases, we've talked to the owner, we've talked to the brokers. And so we're waiting to kind of have them tell us, okay, well, what is your strategy? Essentially, we need to sit down with them and, and we haven't arranged that yet.
And then, oh, and you didn't talk about this, but I, I was curious. In the staff report, it was talking about Team California. And then I was just wondering how we would utilize this, would we have any goals with participating in this? And then like what successes have other cities experienced with Team California?
So if you're, if you're not familiar, so Team California is an organization that essentially is, is an outreach organization. So what they allow us to do is, if we want to go to, say, the biotech conference, rather than us having, paying individually for us to have a booth at that conference, the benefit of joining Team California is then Team California has an overall booth. And, and then the member cities could then join with that booth at a lower cost. And then they do, they do the lion's share of the marketing and the outreach, you know, to the attendees. So it's really a cost-saving kind of measure. And, and, and it allows us to participate with a larger presence at these type of conferences. And that's really what it's all about. And so in our case, we would be identifying which ones fit into our kind of attraction goals, what type of companies, what type of conferences would we go to, and then we could figure out how we could partner with them Team California.
Okay, because, oh, okay, great, because that's also very similar to the broker engagement. So yeah, okay, that was it. Thank you.
I threw clarifying questions before we go to public comment, Council.
Yes.
Councilmember Desa.
Thank you. On the Alameda Point Economic Development efforts, can you shed a little bit more light on, you know, what is meant by the work that's been done regarding the shade structures for Spirits Alley tenants? There, there's two sentences in here. I mean, so you've, staff has contacted local biologists and architects. So what are we looking at?
Yeah, so the challenge, so we, we had meetings with, started off with meetings with faction and learning from them, you know, what a high percentage of their income is derived from people coming there, which was kind of shocking to us. And so for someone like that, and then that went to then having the same conversation with St. George and then also Gold Bar that's coming in. And, and then all three of them basically said, you know, we're, we're heavily reliant on people coming in person and spending money in person at our locations. The problem is that, that they, they don't know how to get through that process of building shade structures that meet the requirements of the biological report. And so what we're doing is then we hired the biologist that worked on the report. And so, so with that person, individual is going to do for us is, he's then going to review all the plans that get put together. And then he's going to represent and, and, and he's going to, he's going to be the one that, that, that presents those plans to the Department of Fish and Game saying, you know, based on my analysis, these structures that are, that are being proposed fit the requirements of the biological report. And then in cases where, where people don't have the funds to hire their own architect to draw up the plans, then we also have a contract that we can put together that would give assistance to some of those companies. Because what we learned is it's very crucial for them, that, that they can't just rely on the nice sunny days. They have to have people there much longer period of the year. And what they're saying now is that, well, when it's cold and rainy, no one wants to come. If it's too hot, people bake out in the sun. So we have this wonderful amenity of seeing San Francisco, but we need to get more people here. And so our efforts are to help guide them through that process. And, and ultimately it'll be up to, you know, the Department of Fish and Game whether they approve those. But, but our assistance is, is needed because they feel like they really don't understand how to do it themselves.
I see. And just for members of the public, I think the issue is that having some kind of shade that doesn't allow or discourages predators from perching, who could then swoop down onto the lease turn colony, is, is that the?
Right. So what the biologist is, is kind of said, you have two issues. One is that exactly, that you don't want to create structures where predators could perch. And then even the design of the, of the shade structure has to be in a way that if you're, if you're the bird looking towards the building, you know, they can't use like wind sail, you can't have things that are flopping around that would look like a predator. So there's the design itself of how it looks from the bird's perspective. And then there's design of how you're dealing with predators. So those are the two issues that they're going to help guide us through and guide the architects, architects through.
Okay, interesting. Second question, again, Alameda Point. Can you, you mentioned maritime strategy. Can you shed light on what, what is meant by the maritime strategy at Alameda Point?
Oh, that's actually, that's more of a, of an Abby question. Because their department is the one dealing with that.
She's ready, if you want me to.
I know she's on the line.
Okay.
And she said if there was any questions that related to her, I could.
She's ready.
Thank you.
Welcome, Vice Reuse and Economic Development Director Abby Thorne Lyman. I'll talk really quietly, slowly.
Thank, thank you. Can you, can you hear me okay? Hi.
We sure can. Hello.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Apologies for being on Zoom tonight. For the maritime strategy, we're really focused on the area around the peers. And, and our goal is to draw in more maritime and blue tech businesses. This is tied to our need to reinvest in the peers. So we right now have requests for proposals out on the streets to get a cost estimate for structural, for like a structural analysis of the peers to see what is needed to, to refurbish those. And then simultaneously, we have a consultant who is creating a business plan for what kind of revenue we could get off the peers, specifically tying into the maritime and blue tech industries. And of course, we're talking to all of our fantastic maritime and blue tech businesses that are already in Alameda. We've got Bay Ship and Yacht, very involved, Sail Drone, Power Engineering, Navier. So sort of just looking at how we can build on the nascent cluster that we've already managed to form and use our peers, which are an amazing asset to kind of grow that, that industry.
Okay, any follow-up clarifying question? Follow-up, as a follow-up clarifying question, would the maritime strategy include, and I'm raising this point bluntly in a negative fashion, would the maritime strategy include like Port of Oakland type of shipping containers who would load and offload containers and have those Merck, Merck container trucks go in and out?
It's very unlikely. As you, as you, I'm sure are aware, Councilmember, the, the Sea Plane Lagoon has become quite silted and, and, and we would have to dredge to pretty significant depths to actually be supporting that kind of cargo movement. So I don't think that's the kind of industry we're specifically looking at. But we have uncovered that there are a lot of businesses that would like access to peers, but you know, the Port of Oakland really deals specifically in that very uniform sized shipping container and, and those logistics. And so they can, there's, and there's no space, there's no space for other uses. So it would be leveraging the peers, but not the shipping aspect of the peers. And then as well as the surrounding land that we call the enterprise parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Director Thorne Lyman. Any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Being none, Madam Clerk, do we have, thank you. Do we have a public comment?
We have none.
Oh, well, we will close public comment on item seven D and we will come back to, let's see, so this, what's being recommended here is to accept the economic development status update and provide feedback. But, which I think we've done some of even through our questions. But Councilmember Bowler, we haven't heard from you. Would you like to go next?
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted, thanks for the report. I thought it was very helpful to see some of the innovations, especially around the vacancy issue. I do think that the overall concepts that we've also heard addressed in terms of Alameda Point, shopping districts, all these things are really maritime, these are all important components. And what I've noticed, and I think should be stated, is that this is, as you, as you've said, like this is a community collaboration and the business districts, the business leaders, and really the members of the city council, because I'm aware that, you know, members of this council have been very involved with meeting with business leaders and trying to be good ambassadors to new businesses. I happen to live on Harbor Bay. I was paying close attention to Councilmember Jensen's questions. And I, and I have been talking to staff about that and hoping to have additional meetings with residents and staff and possibly the property owners there about that issue. I think it's really, really important and very challenging. So there's, there's a lot of other things, I just want the public to be aware. There's a lot of other things that weren't discussed tonight that have been, that are in the works that the city is involved in. But it's, it's a true partnership with the business community and many Alamidans who want to see, you know, major improvements in these areas. But I, I do support, of course, the, the, the update and thank staff for its work.
Thank you for that. You know, I have a question I didn't ask before, and it might be hard to answer. But when could we expect to see some results? When, you know, I'm sure you've picked the low hanging fruit, but when, when I walk on Park Street and really more Park Street than Webster, I feel like Webster is kind of filling its, its vacancies. But when, when do you think some of this, these strategies will, will bear fruit?
Yeah, so one of the things I didn't mention is in our kind of targeted approach. So, so in those first two categories, every week we have a discussion with WAB and DAB about, okay, what, what is the one that we could focus on? How can we help with that? One of the things we're looking at is in, in our 515 reports to the council, one of the things we'd like to do is expand that to have, okay, these are set categories of what we're doing in economic development every month. And with that, we'd have a set category of, okay, what is the latest update for, for Park and Webster Street? So that you could be more aware of, okay, in this last month, these are the changes in these properties. So I feel we're very close on, on, on two or three properties. Part of it's also difficult in that, that until like the lease is signed, until we know that, okay, they are going to be moving in, it's hard to kind of publicly say this is happening for sure. But once we get to that point, then we'll be happy to let the public know and, and the council know as well.
Okay, and then to the point that two of my council colleagues made, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Bowler, about the shopping centers and probably I'm visually mentally scanning our shopping centers. Probably the Harbor Bay Landing is the most vacant of the shopping centers. And, and it is definitely not the oldest shopping center on the island. But so whose, whose focus will that be?
That will be ours.
So a dedicated team dedicated to shopping centers? Because I, I think that that's probably a little different animal than a downtown district.
Yeah, so that's, whereas, whereas it downtown districts were more, were partnering with WAB and DAB.
Associations.
And we're working together. For shopping centers, it would be primarily ourselves. So that would be an economic development function to, and we're happy to report out of, okay, of this, what is the strategy that's coming out of our meeting with Harbor Bay?
Well, and of course, with, I mean, at least I know for South Shore Center and for the Marina Village Shopping Center, there's definitely a leasing team and a brokerage. I'm not sure if there's that for Harbor Bay.
I don't know if they have a broker. So that's, that's also a challenge in that, that, you know, for, for, for owners that are much more involved in properties, they have, they typically have either their own leasing team or they're working with, you know, well-known Colliers or Grub and Ellis or one of the well-known brokerage companies. Others are, well, we're doing this ourselves. And so that's part of our work is to kind of educate them and give them options of who we can work with.
I think, I'm just thinking back, I'll disclose that the city manager and I, and I think Safeway's real estate attorney maybe had a conversation. And I think there was a broker that they were dealing with, but, you know, maybe not quite as robust an actor as one might hope.
So in many cases, you'll have, you'll have a broker that the owner will hire for the entire center. And, but that, but then there's also brokers that are involved. So you'll have Safeway's real estate person. And so, so our outreach would be not only to the property owner or the broker that's dealing with the whole center, but it'd be outreach into that real estate representative for Safeway or for CVS. And that's who we also have contact with.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yes, Assistant City Manager, Oldridge.
Mayor, if I may add also, the Planning Building Transportation Director, Alan Tai, has been reaching out to the owners of Harbor Bay Landing. And, and, and so he is actively trying to work with them and, and connect with them so he can help identify their challenges.
He has been a huge help, including with language issues, because he can speak Chinese, whatever the dialect was. So no, I really appreciated that. And it, it was Safeway's Real Estate, people reached out to me and, and, you know, I brought the city manager in. And, and I think Director Tai was, if he wasn't at that meeting, we definitely brought him in quickly after that. It is complicated, but I'm glad to hear that you're, you're working on that. Okay, Councilmember Jensen, okay, Desa Lynn Jensen. No, Desa Lynn Jensen.
Thanks.
Desa Lynn Jensen, thank you.
Okay, all right. Two related questions. Several years ago, former council member slash Vice Mayor John Knox White, prior to becoming a council member, helped put together the Economic Development Strategic Plan. When was that? Two thousand, I don't know, maybe 2014, 2015, can't remember. And one element of the Economic Development Strategic Plan had the concept of economic gardening, i.e. fostering locally owned businesses or entrepreneurs who are, you know, working out of their house, but then hopefully grow into being able to be, you know, retailers or service providers in, in specific space. So, you know, how does that factor into your review of, you know, how, how that you're going to be trying to help resolve some of the challenges of our different commercial areas? And related, on the flip side of economic gardening for locally owned businesses, how do you, you know, guard against kind of formula type of businesses just, you know, coming in here? Chain stores. Not that all chain stores are bad, some chains are good. But, you know, we, you know, how, how does all of this kind of factor into, you know, your presentation today? So that we kind of, I mean, what I see on Webster Street, for example, Webster Street south of, well, Webster Street is, is just a lot of, you know, literally locally owned businesses, you know. So anyways.
Right. I'll, I'll address that, the second part of the question first. Much of that comes down to the actual kind of the, the space itself. So in most cases, chains, you know, they have their formula for what kind of space they want. And typically, unless they're, unless they're, you know, very desperate to be in a location that doesn't fit their normal kind of box, then that's not really for them. So just the layout of the buildings themselves on, on Park Street and Webster Street really lend themselves to much more mom and pop locally owned. There, there aren't that many instances where a chain would come in and say, this fits our requirements. And we're willing to kind of bend our requirements, the look and feel, the signage in order to be in your downtown.
That's good.
So I don't, I don't feel like there's a, there's, there's, should be a worry of, of all of our good spaces is going to be filled up by the chains. Just based on the design of the buildings.
Great.
Yeah, was it for you?
Oh, no, and then on, on, on the positive side of encouraging locally, honey.
Yeah, so I think for the economic gardening, I mean, essentially, it's, it's, it's identifying, you know, those kind of emerging small companies. And how can your programs help them to be the next kind of stars to, to grow and expand? So part of that is, is, you know, part of our business visits not only are in the business districts themselves, the retail kind of districts, but we're also meeting with, with the Harbor Bay people, with Research Park. And so, so we're having meetings with those kind of property managers to learn more about the tenants that they have. So Research Park does have a biotech kind of incubator. And so that's a perfect example of ways that we could support those kind of growing companies. And we have that type of space in our, both in Harbor Bay and Research Park. And given our proximity to UC Berkeley, a lot of those companies are coming out of our universities. And so part of our business visitation is to, is to get a better idea of who those companies are, what they're doing and kind of how can we help them grow and expand? That's kind of the concept of the gardening.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. And thank you for, for everything. I, I want to, I'm not going to go back to Harbor Bay Landing. All that, that, I think that's been covered pretty well. And I want to, I know that also appreciate the information about planning, building and transportation, doing independent encouragement of the owner of that site. But I wanted to just add and, and cite one thing that wasn't really discussed, but was in your report, and that's the, the provision, the code enforcement provisions and the suggestion that there would be working with planning, building and transportation and code enforcement to adoption of a property maintenance code. And I, I'm bringing this up. I, I live near the Park Street Bridge and just as an example, there was a building near the Park Street Bridge called the Park Street Bridge Park, not the Park Street Bridge, excuse me, the High Street Bridge. It was called the High Street Station or the High Street, High Street Bridge Building. And they, for about the last 20 years, it's been abandoned. It's had various things, but the concrete's been peeling, the facade's been peeling, the roof needed replacement. And it wasn't until the past year that with outreach and support from the city, but also finding a niche that that building is, is been completely remodeled and, and brought up to code. And so I'm just pointing this out because I, that part of this report is really important to me, to Alameda residents, to, for, for economic development to work with planning, building and transportation and to identify blighted properties, properties that are being abandoned or, or unused, including some of the parts of the Harbor Bay Landing Shopping Center. But there are many other sites, some right near us here at City Hall. So if you just what you've mentioned already and continue that work with planning, building and transportation, I think that would be very effective. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions, comments, discussion, or are we ready for a motion? Vice Mayor Pryor.
Yeah. I, sorry, I was. Sorry. Oh, anyway, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the collaboration with the, a business community and the assertive approach to filling vacancies and supporting our current businesses.
I'm really pleased with the plan. And so I hope I can get a motion to accept the economic development status update and provide, when we've provided feedback. Councilmember Bowler? Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Bowler, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't hear anything but ayes. So that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Keep up all the good work and we look forward to the next progress report where you tell us these businesses have now been dropped from the list because they're occupied success stories. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, let's go on to item 7E.
Introduction of ordinance amending the Alameda Municipal Code by adding section eight dash eight point nine, electrical vehicle charging to article eight dash eight, general parking regulations of chapter eight, traffic motor vehicles and alternative transportation modes to limit the use of designated parking spaces at curbside locations and city-owned parking facilities to electric vehicles that are connected for electric charging purposes. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, this project exists from sequel review under sequel guidelines, sections 15308, not a project, 15061B3, common law sense exception and 15308, actions by regulatory agencies for protections of the environment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And welcome and please introduce yourself. And the floor is yours. And by the way, is 10 minutes enough or do you need more time for your staff report?
10 minutes.
10 minutes?
Fine.
Fine. We don't need to vote on that. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the council. My name is Ricardo De La Torre, Parking Manager with the city. First, I want to say thank you, Madam Mayor, for the State of the City address, as well as our Planning, Building and Transportation Team for the CARP update this evening. Definitely a supportive prelude to tonight's item. So we are here this evening to introduce an ordinance adding section eight dash eight point nine, electrical vehicle charging to article eight dash eight, general parking regulations to the Alameda Municipal Code. This ordinance will make it unlawful to park in a public parking space designated for electric vehicles unless the vehicle is connected to a charger. So currently the city operates eight public EV chargers, providing chargers, charging stations for four spaces at the Civic Center Garage, just down the street, and 10 spaces at the Seaplane Lagoon Ferry Terminal pictured above. As part of the city's EV expansion over the next three years, staff plan to implement additional EV charging stations at 12 public parking lots and 30 new curbside locations citywide. These future EV stations will be constructed through the master license agreement, which was on tonight's consent calendar. Additionally, a grant award from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC, will support the installation of these chargers with that grant being a future council item for acceptance. So transportation accounts for roughly 54% of Alameda's greenhouse gas emissions. To reduce these missions and meet our climate action and resiliency goals, deploying public EV chargers in parking lots and the public right of way is essential. If I could show a, have a show of unanimous hands, how many here have operated an EV, electric vehicle, or used a charging station? I'm sure if we would have asked that same question approximately 10 years ago, there could have been less hands.
I heard it 10 years ago.
Well, over the past five years, the number of electric vehicles in Alameda has increased from 2.3% to 8.9%. Now to quantify that data, that's roughly 4,500 vehicles, data coming from DMV. Which clearly highlights the growing need for accessible charging infrastructure. Now, for the purpose of inclusivity, public EV chargers are particularly important for all residents, especially those who rent, live in homes without driveways or garages, or reside in multifamily apartments. Now, to ensure these charging spaces, spaces are used appropriately and remain available to those who need them, enforcement of the proposed ordinance is necessary. Now, staff recognizes based on public complaints, the need for a mechanism to ensure that EV charging spots are used exclusively by electric vehicles connected to the charger, even if they are not actively charging. So to the extent that parkers do not comply with the ordinance, the city may issue the vehicle citation. The recommended fine amount for violating the ordinance is $45, which aligns with the city's existing expired meter violation. Staff plan to include the new fine amount as part of the fiscal year 2527 biennial budget adoption and the next master fee schedule update. Now, council, it is important to emphasize that the goal of this ordinance is not to generate revenue for the city. Rather, it is designed to promote fair access to EV charging stations, encourage compliance, and support Alameda's commitment to sustainability and clean transportation. Well, how do you avoid a citation? No one, including me, likes getting a citation, especially in San Francisco because it's super expensive. Well, this slide highlights the proper and improper use of EV charging spaces under the proposed ordinance. Vehicles parked in a designated EV charging space must be connected to the charging station in order to comply with the ordinance. As shown in the left image, red circle, if a vehicle is parked in a designated EV space without being connected to the charger or the charging station, the vehicle could receive a citation. On the other hand, the right image, green circle, demonstrates the correct way to use a designated EV space. As you can see, the vehicle is connected to the charger, avoiding a citation. So to help ensure compliance, staff plans to develop and install signage at each of the EV charging stations. The signs will clearly communicate the requirement for both, to both pay for your space and be connected to the charger in order to avoid a citation. Again, I want to reiterate, the purpose of this ordinance is to ensure the EV charging spaces are used correctly and to promote fair access for those who need to charge their vehicles. Staff recommends, our recommendation tonight is to approve the first reading of the ordinance, adding section eight dash eight point nine, electric vehicle charging to article eight dash eight, general parking regulations of the Alameda Municipal Code, making it unlawful to park in a public electric vehicle designated space unless the vehicle is connected to the charger. So for next steps, if the reading is approved tonight, the next step is the second reading or final passage, which will occur on April 15th. Assuming that is approved, the ordinance will be in effect after 30 days from the date of its final passage. Thank you. This concludes our presentation.
You did a very nice job. Thank you. Could I just note that the photograph has no one in the seats and you're not going to pass anything unless there's people to vote. So just, you know, get little stick figures or something. That was my.
Stand by. Let me take a picture.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Clarifying questions, council? Councilmember Jensen.
Just one question. Did you evaluate, when you came, when you developed the ordinance, did you evaluate the, an alternative of requiring that the EV be actively charging?
We, Public Works, had worked with our Planning, Building and Transportation Team, specifically our Sustainability Manager, to try and determine how that could be addressed. And I may.
I think she's there. Yeah, come on up.
Our Sustainability Manager, Danielle Meyer.
Welcome back.
Hi. So we've been getting a lot of questions about the actively charging versus connected. And I think there's an important word in the ordinance, connected for the purposes of charging. So that means that the vehicle is not just plugged in passively, but they are there and they have inserted their credit card and they are charging their vehicle. And those charge point chargers that were shown at Seaplane Lagoon, you can't extract the charging plug without inserting your credit or your payment app. So that would demonstrate that you're participating in a charging session. Using Seaplane as an example, we do know that people park there because they've gone to work in San Francisco for the day. So they might finish charging at two in the afternoon and we wouldn't want them to be penalized having to come back and move their vehicle because they finished charging before the workday is over. But in other locations, like at Civic Center Garage, where we have chargers, we do want there to be pretty active turnover. And I know that there is often vehicles there that they also park for the day and leave it and it's finished charging, but they're probably maybe at City Hall.
But not working at City Hall, right? Just.
So the idea could be that we can use our providers, the fee structure from our providers to charge an idle fee so that once vehicles are done charging, they would be encouraged to, to move on and make that space available for the next person.
Thank you. Could I just ask this, our acting city attorney, Ms. Silver, do you see any issues with, I totally understand what Ms. Mueller said because, you know, you, you park at Seaplane Lagoon. I am generally dashing to the ferry, so I don't think I'd even have time to connect my car, but I do that at home. But, but to say, you, you know, you've, you've plugged in and you're right, you will be, you'll be home, but the, the charging will have long since finished. But under the same ordinance, if we're treating folks who park and charge at Seaplane Lagoon differently than those who park at Civic Center, is any concerns with that?
No, I don't see any concerns with that. We have different regulations, parking regulations throughout the city. So it's very common to have, you know, a two-hour parking only restriction in one area where you want to encourage rapid turnover. And I think discussing at a staff level, we had discussed that perhaps in situations, if we do see the need for more of a turnover, that we could overlay this time restriction.
And so as long as we had good signage that's informing the, the user that this is the limits, then that, that works.
Okay, exactly. Yes.
Okay. Clarifying question. Come on. Did you have something? You want to add Mr. De La Torre?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Jensen.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions, Vice Mayor Pryor?
Yeah, I just, I do like this and that it, because I live in an older building and so I did not buy an electric car because it's going to be really inconvenient to find charging. So I, I do like this because it gives people that live in apartments or older buildings more options when they go to buy cars in the future. But so my question is, like, how equitable is this? Like, are there specific neighborhoods or parts of the island that are going to have more charging stations? And then how will this also, how will neighborhoods be impacted by like parking loss? I mean, I'm guessing that that's taken into account, but I just wanted to ask.
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Pryor. I would also like to turn it over to Danielle again.
It's good teamwork here.
So I think your question is about the pilot charging program more than the, than the ordinance. So we are proposing a, a public charging program that focuses on exactly what you talked about. There's a lot of residents in Alameda who don't have access to charging at home, which is the ideal place to charge your vehicle, that in a workplace. So we have renters, we have people with, in single family homes without driveways. We have people in older homes and in multifamily apartments that don't have the opportunity to buy an electric vehicle and to benefit from the lower maintenance cost and the lower fuel, fueling costs that come with owning an electric vehicle. So we do want to, to provide more opportunities for electric, for electric vehicle ownership in Alameda. So we have our two-pronged approach. We're focusing on city-owned parking lots and working with a provider to install chargers at as many city-owned parking lots as we can. So we think, we think that's a good strategy. There are some downfalls to it. We do want to encourage people to walk and bike to our downtown locations where many of our city-owned parking lots are. A lot of those lots have two-hour restrictions, which is not often enough time to fully charge a vehicle. So we think that those are a great benefit, but really the best place to charge is at home and for people who can't have opportunities to do that. And many of our parking locations, parking lots are not located evenly throughout the neighborhoods. We have very few, in the central part of Alameda, where we have many multifamily apartments, there's very few city parking lots. So we're pursuing curbside charging with a provider. It's electric and the strategy there would be to, to tap into excess electric capacity in the electric panels of a private building that's adjacent to the, the street near the sidewalk and provide a public charger on the street that can be used by the public. So there would be a building site host that enters into an agreement with the provider to make their electric panel available. They would get reimbursed for the electricity with a small profit share agreement for their, for their effort. And then they let the EV charger would be available to anyone in the public who wants to charge. And it would be easier to locate those within the neighborhoods closer to. And it would be easier to locate those within the neighborhoods closer to where people are living and already parking likely on the street at night and may already be driving electric vehicles or wanting to switch their electric vehicles or their current vehicle to an electric one and be able to charge it when they're at home. So we are targeting multifamily, mixed-use neighborhoods primarily or locations that are kind of near sites that have a lot of activity, like maybe a school or a park or a commercial district. We are staying away from areas that have parking restrictions, like meters or two-hour spots. We want to be near commercial locations, but not in them because it's so congested and there's a lot of need for, for parking and turnover. But in neighborhood, kind of off-street areas, a little bit quieter, maybe near those corridors. And then also considerations like not interfering with bike lanes in areas where there's wide enough sidewalks and not interfering with other below-ground infrastructure and things like that.
Good. Sounds like a lot of thought has gone into this. Thank you. Clarifying questions from Councilmember Bowler?
And just to follow up to that, the curbside locations, that's a, that's a separate issue then for later is to decide where they would be or?
So staff is working with the provider to, we've identified some selection criteria, much of which I just described, and then we're working with the provider to identify those locations. And then they're going to go through a permitting process through Public Works and Building to permit those locations. So we'll be working at the staff level to confirm that those are suitable locations for charging. We are looking at a pilot program for the curbside that's thirty chargers across the city.
And would the public would have a opportunity to weigh in on the selection of those locations at some point?
We are not, first, we're not asking public input on the locations of chargers. We are soliciting, we are inviting participation from the building owners to basically offer up their building and the parking space directly adjacent to, in front of their building for providing chargers. Of course, that owner does not have exclusive access to that parking space. It's still a public parking space, but they are indicating their willingness to have a charger, public charger located in front of their property.
And we're likely only talking about one space within a certain neighborhood? And this is with a commercial building only or?
It could be residential building. We're focusing on mixed-use and multifamily neighborhoods. But of course, there are single-family homes in those neighborhoods as well. And some of them are actually really excellent locations because they have, you know, business or they have property owners that are really willing to work with the city and interested in engaging and they can provide a benefit to their neighbors who might live in multifamily apartments.
Okay. Are there clarifying questions? Yes, Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. To, to Councilmember Bowler's, that what was just discussed with Vice Mayor and Councilmember Bowler. And this is a parking question, actually. So with these curbs or the, the street-side parking EV chargers, would they, and I, and I understand that there's been work done to, to determine where the best location would be related to the building owner, et cetera. But not, there, most of the neighborhoods in Alameda don't have parking restrictions. So how would that be addressed? Would there be a new parking zone in each, at each site of the EV charger that's on the street?
At, at this point, we have not been an assessment of new zones. There is an existing ordinance where a vehicle cannot be parked for more than seventy-two hours. A question did come up, hey, what if somebody's connected and they're just, they're off to Switzerland for, you know, a year? Then what happens? Well, just by default, our, our internal processes within our enforcement program would switch on. We would utilize our existing ALPR license plate recognition or talk the roadway and say this vehicle is here at this time, it's still here, et cetera. That's for an area, an existing curbside location where there is not any time limits or assigned times, like two hours, you know, thirty-minute time restrictions or what have you.
So, but, but with regard to just the, the ordinance, the, the ordinance being passed and the, the enforcement, would there be parking, parking staff just driving around these sites to ensure that there isn't a vehicle parked at the charging station, even though there's no other parking restrictions in the area?
Thank you for the, for the question, Councilmember Jensen. So provided that we have the resources, our existing enforcement staff are prioritizing their routine routes, if you will, for safety-sensitive locations, as well as some of our regulatory signed areas, like street sweeping, et cetera. So it may be in their routine travels. I do anticipate getting, receiving calls from the public saying, there's a vehicle on X block not plugged in, come give them a site. Provided there's adequate resources, it, it more than likely would not be a priority, but it could be within our staff's routine travels.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? Let's go to public comment.
We have none.
We have none. We'll close public comment. I just would like to lead on the comments on this one. I'm really excited about this ordinance. You know, we, we've talked in the past about the equity piece of electric vehicles and that it really was restricted to people. You had to have a place to charge and that was restricted to people who could add a charger on their driveway, in their garage, what have you. And in a city that has so much older building stock, especially a lot of our multifamily buildings, it just wasn't tenable. So I, I think, and that's the pilot program certainly. But on the ordinance, I think this is great. I mean, we need, we know we need more opportunities for people to publicly, to charge their electric vehicles. And this is just part of what goes into reducing our emissions. You know, that's, it's part of the mode shift and, and getting people to switch the kind of cars they're driving. But again, if you drive an EV, you've got to have a place to park, to, to charge it. And this just levels the playing field more for people because you can get EVs now at reasonable prices, but still have to have a place to charge them. But that's something the city can help do, so I'm, I'm all for it. Other questions, comments, motion? We have one more item after this.
If I may.
Oh, please, Mr. Delatorre.
On the topic of adding EV, I did want to put a plug to our capital project, the security enhancement project at the Civic Center Garage. For the purpose of considering those with disabilities, we will also be, as part of that capital project, installing EV infrastructure for the van-accessible ADA spaces.
Excellent.
Thank you.
It's great to know. All right. Who wants to make a motion to approve this? Well, it's introducing the ordinance and I'll come back for the second reading at our next meeting.
So moved.
Councilmember Bowler moves. Vice Mayor Pryor seconds. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. That sounded unanimous to me and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. You did a really great job.
Thank you.
Right. And council, we are moving right along to our last action item, right? Which is item seven F. And Madam Clerk, would you introduce that to us?
Recommendation to accept the 2024 annual reports on the Alameda 2040 General Plan Housing Element, Transportation Choices Plan, and Vision Zero Action Plan. Acceptance of annual reports is statutory legally exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guideline, section one five zero six one B three.
Thank you and welcome. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Steve Buckley. I'm the Planning Services Manager. And I'll be doing a, a very quick introduction to a portion of this report and then supported by other staff who have information on the transportation report. So as far as the general plan and housing report, this update focuses on the general plan and housing element that were updated in 2022. And the housing element was certified by the state at that time. And so we're now implementing the programs that were approved by the state, including a number of actions that have already been taken in terms of adopting zoning program that addresses housing development throughout the city. We also have area plans for Alameda Point and the North Waterfront that are being implemented. We have a series of projects that are in the pipeline in collaboration with our partners with the ReShape and Miss West Midway Project, the North Housing Project, and Habitat for Humanity. We're also working on a project at a former school district property with the housing authority. So we have a lot going on. But as you can see from this table that was in the report as well, there's sort of a lag between planning and zoning and wishing and hoping and then actually seeing projects come out of the ground. So we have seen a slowdown in development in the past couple of years. But we do have a lot of units in the pipeline. And so we're hoping that in order to meet our regional housing needs in the next five years, that we will see more building permits pulled, given uncertainties at the time, you know, we, we're still waiting and seeing. But we are seeing a lot of ADUs, for instance. So there are people who are at least doing the smaller projects and we have a lot of big projects that are underway and we hope new ones will start. As far as the programs that I mentioned, though, we are seeing a lot of cooperation with our partners, as I mentioned. We're working with the Housing Department of the City as well as the Alameda Housing Authority. We're working with the Public Works and Rent Program on a number of these projects that you see here in terms of also some tenant work with the enforcement group and low-income assistance with AMP, even participating in some of those programs. So I won't read these all off. They're in the report, but I just wanted to mention them as things that we're really proud of as far as being able to report to the state, which we just did in March. Continued progress on not just housing production, but things that we do have control over in terms of these sorts of programs. And with that, I'll turn it over to.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Ms. Yashcraft, thank you. And council members, I'm Lisa Foster, Transportation Planning Manager. And I will begin our transportation annual report, which fulfills reporting requirements for council priorities adopted in our plans, which include goals related to safety, transportation choices, active transportation and equity. And this report represents the work of multiple departments, but it is mostly transportation planners in the Planning, Building, and Transportation Department, like me, who work on city plans and programs and policies and projects, generally at least to the design concept level. And then we pass off to Public Works who take over and make things actually happen in the ground, construct projects and maintain our roadways. And so I shared this presentation with Scott Wickstrom, Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer. He'll take over later. Just a few highlights of what we've been up to. Last year was another banner year. We built 1.2 miles of all ages and abilities bikeways and improved safety at eighty-nine intersections, constructed ninety-two curb ramps, upgraded curb ramps and repaired nearly four hundred sidewalk trip hazards. And the older adults and people with disabilities who participate in our free bus pass program took over two hundred thousand rides on the bus last year. Also, after more work than the public can imagine and a great collaboration with our project partners, we did launch the Oakland-Alameda Water Shuttle in July, as the mayor touched on in the State of the City address. And we, in the first five and a half months, served fifty-one thousand passengers and over ten thousand bicycles. Also completed the Clement Avenue Improvements Project, as the mayor described, and launched our Neighborhood Greenways Planning and Design, developing an implementation strategy and concept for Pacific Avenue and got a lot of public engagement. Just to give you a sense of where we're at, our rate of traffic fatalities and severe injuries continues to be significantly lower than the overall rate in the county or the state. And thankfully, we have come down from increases in 2021 and especially 2022, when such crashes increased nationwide. Bus ridership has continued to grow. Ferry ridership is also growing. Alameda riders are now the majority of the S of Bay ferries riders system-wide on any given weekday. We are seeing, so we now have fifty-nine miles of bikeways with forty percent of those being low-stress facilities that don't share the roadway with fast-moving vehicles. And correspondingly, we are seeing increases in biking. An annual count of seven intersections found a twenty percent increase in biking since 2016, 2017. And the census found that bike commuting is steadily rising. Walking commutes are recovering and drive-alone commutes continue to decrease even post-pandemic. And now I will pass off to our Deputy Director Wickstrom.
Welcome.
Good evening. The third of our little trio here presenting, Scott Wickstrom, Deputy Public Works Director, City Engineer. I'll be talking mostly about where, what, what's on the deck for 2025. We talked about this a little bit earlier in your State of the City address. The Cross-Alameda Trail is very nearly complete. There's a big gap at the old former Pennzoil site. There's a private developer developing that site. And prior to them receiving occupancy for their first building, they will have that roadway open and that bicycle section complete. We anticipate that later this summer. It's on their schedule. And then Clement Tilden, it's the last, the extension of Clement from its terminus at Broadway to tie into what's going to be a new roundabout at the intersection of Blending and Tilden. That will be out to bid within, I'm going to say, two months with construction starting in 2025 and complete sometime in 2026. Neighborhood Greenways, there's been a lot of talk about this. We've been working very hard behind the scenes. We got some initial work that's going to start in the next month with some new stop signs being added both Pacific and Willow and Pacific and Walnut. The first phase of Pacific Avenue is going to start later this fall. Almost certainly be September, October timeframe. And that's going to be for a phase from Oak to Lafayette. We're going to use that really as a pilot kind of program to look at three different treatment options that we're going to actually put in the field and get some feedback from the public, how they like those features. At the same point, we're going to start our outreach for Versailles and San Jose. April nineteenth, we have a pop-up event at both those locations. And pending funding, as we come forward our capital budget request in the coming year, the network will be completed in 2026. Oakland-Alameda Access Project, there's been a lot of talk about this already tonight. Very valuable and important project for both the City of Alameda and the City of Alameda. Twenty years in the making. It's just about here. My understanding is they're ready to go out to bid within a month or two. And they will start breaking ground later this fall. We have been working very closely with Alameda CTC to both work on communication and also look at ways to reduce the duration of closures and ways that we can help mitigate while those closures are in effect. There are some upcoming public events for information that's available that people can find information on the Alameda CTC's website for that. And then I love this slide because there's no way you can read it. The important part about this slide here is that this represents in orange all the work that we're going to start in 2025 and in blue, the larger planning projects that we have for 2026. And to look at it, you basically see that we're working over the entire width of the main island and a significant amount of work on Bay Farm Island, too. Some key highlights here, Central Avenue, Grand Street are starting in construction. I've got ten seconds left here, so. And then we get to Bay Farm Island, the work on there, we're doing it. Our entire paving project will be on Bay Farm Island with some substantial improvements to Maitland-McCartney and Augenbach.
Mr. Wickstrom, do you need five more minutes?
No, because we're right here. Staff recommendation, if I may, to accept.
Is really the last slide?
It really is the last.
We will read it because your time is up. Thank you. I would have given you, but if, that's okay, that's okay. We can, because we can ask clarifying questions. Any clarifying questions, council? Public comment? Oh, wait, wait. Councilmember Bowler has a clarifying question.
Just from the correspondence file, and thanks for that report. That was very helpful. There's the, there's a letter we received that the public can see on this agenda item from BikeWalk Alameda. And their concern was about, I think, the speed of completion for the slow streets to Neighborhood Greenways. Is there anything you can comment about that? Or can you? Or can you agree that it should be as expeditious as possible, as suggested here?
We are actively working on the Neighborhood Greenways and have been making a lot of great progress. And we do expect, as Scott said, or Mr. Wickstrom said, that we will be beginning construction on Pacific with a couple of things quite soon, and then more this summer. And we do think we will be able to complete the slow street segments on Pacific and Versailles and San Jose by the end of 2026, pending the biennial budget approval.
So if I could just ask, like, they're, they're saying that they would encourage the city to commit to completing as expeditiously as possible, just noting that it hasn't been at the pace that was originally envisioned. Does staff recommend that we endorse that principle in this area for as expeditiously as possible, given where we're at now? Is that implicit in what you're saying? I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we will work as expeditiously as possible and continue to do so. And we'll have a proposal for you for the biennial budget.
Now, seeing other clarifying questions, so let's go to public comment.
We have two, so we'll both get three minutes. So the first is Ruth Abbey in person.
Thank you for the opportunity, Ruth Abbey with Community Action for a Sustainable Alameda. I just wanted to pipe up and say that we are really eager to support of the city in its transportation goals. To supplement and complement, of course, the work of the staff and also our partners over in BikeWalk Alameda, we recognize that there are many things that we can do in addition to promoting biking and walking, including things like getting on transportation and supporting some of the outreach efforts that the city staff are doing. We recently met and have been developing a work plan to see where we might be able to supplement and complement. And one of the things that we would like to rejuvenate is our program of bus buddies, supporting some of our transportation committee members have volunteered to help seniors and others who aren't used to riding the bus and who would like to learn how to ride the bus, to get on the bus. And so that's something that we'd like to rejuvenate. We had an active program that pre-COVID, and we'd like to continue that. So just wanted to put out there that because transportation is our highest greenhouse gas emissions source, we recognize that we need to sort of step up and support that effort that the city staff, city is doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Is remote, Cindy Johnson.
Welcome, Speaker Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Izzy Ashcraft, members of the council and staff. I'm calling on behalf of BikeWalk Alameda to express gratitude to our city for all the great work done last year. We absolutely love the Cross-Alameda Trail, the bike signals and the water shuttle, and are super excited about the other transformational projects that have broken ground or will soon, including Central Avenue, Grand Street, and Neighborhood Greenways. Years of work have gone into all these projects, and it will be extremely fulfilling for people to finally enjoy the results. Incorporating Vision Zero treatments into Public Works paving plans is a recent process change that we're also very excited about. It's a much more efficient way to roll out safety upgrades that will get us to zero traffic deaths or serious injuries as planned. Thank you, Councilmember Bowler, for bringing up our concern about the pace of slow street conversions. If this necessitates more budget, we hope you will provide, provide whatever is needed. You may recall in 2021 that Alameda celebrated winning Silver Status as a bike-friendly city from the League of American Bicyclists. One of our key steps to Gold Status was to improve the low-stress bike network, specifically to build what our city is calling Neighborhood Greenways and focus on connectivity. Let's follow through on this, get them built, and get to Gold next year. Thank you again to you and staff for all you do to make our city safer, more accessible, and greener.
Thank you. Next comment?
That was our only speaker.
That was our only remote speaker? Okay, well, with that, we will close public comment on Item 7F and open it up to council comments. And again, this is one where we're, where it's recommended that we accept the 2024 Annual Reports on the Alameda 2040 General Plan Housing Element, Transportation Choices Plan, and Vision Zero Plan. And I do want to thank all the members of staff. I mean, I know you're representative of all the members who worked on this, but these are really important projects. So thank you so much, all of you. I'm going to make a plug for public transportation while we're here. I think some of you know that I'm a relatively new member to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. I'm really enjoying that. Although, as Assistant City Manager Wildridge knows, I'm stretched kind of thin, and we're just trying to keep my schedule manageable. But we had at our last meeting, which I think was last Wednesday, we started talking about a possible revenue measure, bond measure, to keep public transit systems from going off the fiscal cliff. So far, there are three of the five relevant Bay Area counties that are on board. I think we need to get all five on board. But I can't overemphasize the importance of public transit for our communities, for our workforce, for the environment. And I really encourage all of you, all of us, to use public transit as often as you can. I, it's such an easy habit to get into, at least it has been for me. And I find that when I need to go to meetings in Oakland or even San Francisco, I take public transit because it gives me, usually gives me a little time to get some work done. Sometimes I run into people and just talk. But the ferry is doing quite well. I took the ferry to San Francisco a week ago and was, maybe it's two weeks ago when I had this chat. I took it last week, too. But one of the Weida staff who I met on board told me that the ferries are now up to 95% of their pre-pandemic ridership. And, and so when I was at my MTC meeting last week, and we were talking about the need for Bard and AC Transit and SF Muni and the Caltrain, too. There, these are all the transit systems that are hovering on the brink of the fiscal cliff. And I said, I don't know what the secret sauce is that the ferries have. I mean, it's a gorgeous commute, and no one's grouchy on the ferry ever, unless they didn't get up to the counter to get their wine on the way home on a Friday or something. But no, so, so they're, they're doing the things they need to do to attract people back. It's clean, it's just comfortable and all that. But, but we all need to be transit riders, too. So it's not just for other people. And you just might be surprised how easy it is to get to your destination, not worry about parking. And anyway, that's my plug for that. But thank you for all the work that you all are doing. I'm also a cyclist, and I just really appreciate the additional infrastructure that just keeps being added. And also, last thing is, so when I went to Otis School yesterday to start the morning, and I did park because my next meeting was on the other side of town, and then there was another one after that. But as I was parking, I was just watching all these students. Some of them were walking. I mean, it's elementary school, so some of them were with parents. But they were walking, they were riding their bikes. And it's just good to see that, you know, if, if you build it, they will come. And that it's, it's happening in our schools, and we can, we can do even more. So I'm excited about moving these projects forward. Who wants to go next? Nobody? Well, maybe a motion to approve, whatever. Sure, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may, no, we don't need a roll call vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, that was unanimous, I could tell. Okay, that one passes. Thank you, staff, so much for all of that. We'll move on to Item 8, City Manager Communications. Assistant Acting City Manager, actually, Amy Wildridge, what have you got?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. So we want to alert the community about a planned community organized protest taking place this Saturday, April 5th, from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. in front of City Hall. And on April 9th, the Alameda Police Department will be holding a community meeting to discuss AB 481 and the military use of equipment that they use. More information is available on the city website. In addition, the city is starting, as you've heard, to design Neighborhood Greenways for San Jose, Morton Street, between Calhoun Street and Fernside Boulevard. They'll be constructed next year. So please join us at one of two pop-up events on Saturday, April 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the intersection of San Jose and Chestnut and at Versailles and Lincoln. And today, we launched an eight-week emergency preparedness campaign where you will, you can receive a weekly email with small steps to prepare for big disaster. I just signed up for those, and the first one is all about water storage in the event of a disaster. So it's really good information.
How'd you sign up?
It's on the city website, and it's, and it's quite easy, just a quick email. Lastly, tonight, starting at 10:00 p.m., the Posey Tube leaving Alameda will be closed for maintenance and will reopen at 4:30 a.m. tomorrow morning.
We're going to finish the meeting before.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any further oral communications? Seeing none, no council referrals. Communications, council communications? Vice Mayor?
Yeah. So yeah, I was just going to say, I was a few weeks ago now. I went to the Kwanis Hope of America Awards. There were nine incredible young people, and they were being celebrated for their leadership. So with their charm, intellect, compassion, and talent, they lift up their peers, and their impact has been significant. And the teachers that submitted their names each had truly inspiring things to say about each of them.
Isn't it a great event?
It was, it was lovely, and the food was also really good. But it was, it was so great. And then I went to a tree planting promoted by the Rotary Club. It was, I think, 100,000 trees organization. And they, they were in partnership with the Parks Department. And so we were at Main Street Linear Park. And apparently, we planted 50 trees in 50 minutes. And yeah, there were 80 community volunteers, so that was great. And then, and then a few of us last night went to the Joint Apprenticeship Hope Opportunity Program. And that was great because they talked to us about the paid apprenticeship programs and they have for like sprinklers, fitters, electricians, plumbers, and more. And then their focus is on safety, job and professional excellence, and pride in our communities. And anyway, it was great. I liked it.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Jensen, would you like to go next?
Thank you. There's been a lot going on since the last council meeting. I guess it's, it's gala season or something. But along with the rest, several city council colleagues, I attended the Chamber-sponsored State of the City on March 20th, which was a really great event, and a lot of city staff there, too. On the 22nd, Saturday, I took a kayak tour of the sites of the Oakland-Alameda Adaptation Project. And that was fascinating to see what we're doing in the, in the estuary. And I, it's going to be some work, but we're really going to have, be sustainable and resilient after that's finished. So looking forward to that. Last Thursday, March 22nd, with some of my colleagues, attended the East Bay Economic Development Innovation Awards at the Scottish Rite Temple. And I was very happy to see that the Youth Alive, of which I'm a member of the board, won an award, an innovation award for their community service. It's a great organization. And I did leave early, though, because I had a 6:00 a.m. flight to Burbank on Friday, where I attended the California League of Cities, I participated in the California League of Cities Environmental Quality Policy Committee with a number of other leaders and council members and city managers. And that would, learned a lot about what's going on legislatively in the state of California. And then came back on Saturday. There was a lot going on that you'll hear from, I'm sure, the mayor about, too. But I wasn't able to make it to the tree, the tree planting because in the morning, I helped the mayor cut a ribbon for the replenish shop, reuse and refill shop, a new shop on Webster. Great organization and shop that everyone should be checking it out. I then, later on that day, the Friends of the Alameda Free Library Event on Bay Farm Island, which was really fun and great food there, thanks to Ascena, of course, as well as all of the volunteers of the Friends are just doing such a tremendous job. And later that day, or quite soon after, the Friends of the Library was the Girls Inc. Event, the Women Who Dare Awards. And those always just show off our amazing women and girls of the City of Alameda. So that was, that was my week, a lot going on. And it's a great, great city to be hanging out in.
Okay, Councilmember Bowler.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I attended the State of the City event at Penumbra on March 20th. The Innovation, East Bay Innovation Awards on March 27. The Bonnie Randall Bowler Closing Art Exhibit Reception at Rhythmix Cultural Works on March 28. And then yesterday, the Joint Apprenticeship Hope and Opportunity Program in San Leandro. Thank you.
Several weeks ago, I attended the City, Alameda City Police meeting held at Alameda Point. And the reason why I'm mentioning this is because there are residents there who had expressed concern about certain situations around where they live at Site A. I think we've received a lot of emails from, from these individuals. So one of the things I'd really like to do is kind of figure out, you know, how can we turn it from the email communications that, that the residents are sending about quality of life issues that they're raising? I think they live in the new residence around Site A area. You know, how can we turn their quality of life issues raised in the emails into some, some form of actions? I know city staff might be working on these already, but if there's some policy issues that, that we as a council might have to give, you know, let us, you know, be involved in that. Also, I think, you know, one of the reasons why I raise this even is because as I listen to, to their concerns, you know, there's, because they're new residents, I think they don't understand, don't have a deep appreciation for, you know, the history of housing and the policy choices that we made with regard to, you know, the mix of housing that we're going to have at Alameda Point. So I think that, that kind of background would be helpful. But, but, you know, bringing forward, you know, tangible things that, that we might address that, that deals with their quality of life might be very helpful. And so I'll hope to put together some kind of council referral on this item in the coming weeks.
Thank you. So I will go last. A lot of my colleagues named the things that I've attended, too. Councilmember Jensen, I will give you insider tips about, you don't have to take such an early flight because it's a quick walk to the meeting location. But I, I was on the other flight, yeah. Ask me first next time. But anyway, yes, good. I was, my policy committee met the day before, so I flew down to Burbank, did my Housing Community Economic Development Policy Committee meetings, remotely joined the Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting, then flew back and took the Uber from Oakland Airport to the East Bay Economic Development Awards. It was a full day. And then, let's see, yes, Saturday, all the things that you mentioned, and I talked about visiting Otis School. But what I also want to announce as part of my communications is that I am naming a subcommittee, an Ad-Hoc Council Subcommittee, which is council members Greg Bowler and Tony Desog. And what they will be doing is they will be looking, working with a consultant we're working with on evaluations of the city council. Has three direct reports, the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. And we're in evaluation season right now. And so what my two colleagues will be doing is looking at comparator cities that we should use for salary surveys. And they're going to work with a consultant that we're already working with, probably with HR, and bring back these recommendations to the full council. They might not be the same set of cities because they're different, different positions. But I thank them very much for their, their time and for doing this. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. And I might add, we're adjourning on the same day that we started, unlike the last, which was really an outlier. We don't want to do that very often at all. But thank you, everybody, for all your time. Thank you, staff, and drive safely home, and we'll see you soon. All right, good night, everybody. Still night.